... communications, merit badge, and so, and to celebrate your birthday. So I wanted to welcome them here tonight, and I don't have any changes to the agenda.
Okay.
Welcome, guys.
I would just like to say to thank you all. I felt like I aged in dog years today, so I think I'm about 448, and y'all can figure out what that means. So without objection, can we get approval of the agenda?
Without objection, it's approved as amended.
Okay, without objection, it's approved as amended. So now we'll go to my report. Great, under my report, so I really want to welcome everybody back from the holidays. I hope you enjoyed your family and friends and had a great time. I'd also like to let everybody know that our Operation Warm Hearts winter clothing drive is underway. We're collecting coats, hats, gloves, jackets, and pullovers. On December 2nd, we're hosting a Stuff the Bus event where from sunup to sundown, district staff will stuff the bus with your donations of warm clothing. I hope you'll join us and give them back to the community. You can find more information regarding how to donate on our website at www.scktwelve.org. And that's all I had for my report, but I would like to ask board members if they have anything they'd like to add during this report. Board Member Woods?
Mr. Caldwell, thank you. I mentioned to Board Member Caldwell the need for more mentors for our Tennessee Promise. So I see staff members looking at each other because I've been bombarding the district with email notifications. And so just, I think we used to say, the listening audience, or anyone who watches these meetings, there's a desperate need for more mentors for the Tennessee Promise Grant. In Shelby County alone, we needed about 1,300 mentors. It's a commitment of about eight to 12 hours over the course of a year. As of November 8th, we were only at 506 mentors. So, Mr. Caldwell, I just encourage us, they extended the deadline to December 1st, but that's tennesseeachieves.org, T-N-Achieves.org. If anyone is interested in being a mentor to our seniors and helping them not only get but maintain their Tennessee Promise Scholarship, we encourage our citizens to sign up and support that effort. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
So next, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under my report, I'm pleased to have the Kitchen Community with us to provide an update on the wonderful work they've been doing in our schools. Since April 1st, 2015, the Kitchen Community has partnered with the Shelby County Schools to design, build, and sustain 61 learning gardens in the SCS District. The Kitchen Community has collaborated with several SCS District Departments in order to create beautiful learning spaces and support the school communities that sustain them. I'd like to ask Lisa Ellis, Marie Denon, and Rochelle Brahala to come forward as they have a brief presentation they'd like to share regarding their ongoing work.
For having us. I'm Lisa Ellis. I'm the Regional Director for the Kitchen Community. We are a nonprofit based out of Boulder, Colorado, and we were founded by Hugo Matheson and Kimball Musk. We put learning gardens in schools to teach children about real food in great cities like Denver, LA, Chicago, Pittsburgh, Indianapolis, and of course Memphis. TKC came to Memphis in 2015 and began working in three school districts, ASD, Jubilee, and of course SCS. We are affiliated with the restaurant group who opened the Kitchen Bistro at Shelby Farms Park, and will be opening the Kitchen next door at Crosstown. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight to update you. We have a great local team here, and two of them are here tonight to share their updates. Rochelle will cover the project management update, and Marie will give you a program update. Thank you.
Hi, as Lisa mentioned, my name is Rochelle Brahala. I'm the Project Manager at the Kitchen Community. I'm searching for the, got it. So as a Project Manager, my role is to design, manage construction of, and also manage communication with schools during the learning garden construction process. Since April 2015, we have 74 gardens in schools across Memphis, 61 of which are in Shelby County Schools, and our goal is to reach 85 by June of this year. In order for a school to receive a learning garden, they do have to apply, they have to form a team of dedicated teachers, administrators, and staff who are willing to take care of the garden, and they also have to have space for the garden. Once we establish an adequate site, our team will design the garden, meet with the school to make sure that the design meets all of their needs, and then we'll schedule their garden construction with our contractor, Michael Hatchery and Associates. So construction takes about a week, and after a week of hard work by our crew, the garden is ready to be planted. So as many of you know, the learning garden is not your average school garden. It's unique in many ways. First of all, it's completely organic. Second, if there's not an existing surface that is ADA-approved, we will build one for the school. Third, our gardens make it very easy to grow. Our raised beds have limited weeds, meaning that it's easier to garden on a daily basis, and also produces higher yields. These raised beds, as well as the seedings, make it a very great place to learn as well. The colorful elements really bring this space to life. In some of our gardens, we've been able to install murals. So far, in partnership with the Urban Art Commission, we've installed four murals in Shelby County Schools. This one is at Craigmont High School. The murals further personalize, enliven, and beautify the space. And then finally, we are constantly innovating with the learning garden. Just this year, we have rolled out a new model for our high school gardens. They have a larger footprint, they include more space to grow, and there are also tables included, and this is to better accommodate the high school classroom in an outdoor learning environment. Furthermore, we've installed 22 shade structures in Shelby County Schools. This provides shade during the hotter months, as well as ample seeding underneath the shade structure. And finally, we have started installing storage boxes as of this fall, and every garden moving forward will have a storage box. This is to provide an onsite storage option for hoses and other garden tools. Over the past 18 months, we've observed a significant impact that these gardens have on school communities. The learning garden is a functional learning area, as well as a restorative space for teachers, students, staff, and parents. In a national study conducted for TKC last year, 86% of teachers agree that some subjects are taught more effectively in the learning garden. Gardens are often used as outdoor classrooms or learning labs, and 93% of teachers see an increased level of participation while in the garden. This proves that the learning garden is an effective learning tool for students and teachers. The gardens also create a sense of immense pride for the school. In many situations, we're working with sites that are underused and overgrown. When we install these high caliber, well-designed spaces with very durable product, the gardens really become a prominent feature in the school and a sense of a lot of pride. This spring, we plan to build 11 new gardens, all of which will be in Shelby County Schools, and we look forward to further collaboration with SCS Departments such as Facilities, Plumbing, Risk Management, Nutritional Services, Farm to School, just to name a few, as we create these spaces together. So now I'll turn it over to Marie Denon, our Program Manager, who will talk more about how TKC programming supports teachers in the learning garden.
Hi, my name is Marie. I'm the Program Manager. I oversee the educational program here in Memphis, and also I manage our garden educators who are part of the education team. After a garden is constructed, each school receives continual support from the education team. That support starts with a kickoff event that we facilitate with each school's garden team. At the kickoff event, we work with teachers and students throughout the day to fill the beds with soil, we install an irrigation system, and we make sure that every student is able to plant a seed or a seedling. We generally see about 200 students at each of these kickoff events. After the kickoff event, we continue to provide year-round support to our schools. We internally categorize our schools into three levels to determine the types of support each school needs. We have 26 Level 1 schools, and this is a combination of new schools, schools that are still figuring out how to master their gardening skills, or schools that have had principal or teacher turnover, and they need us to come back in for some more extra support. We have 40, about 40 Level 2 schools. These are schools that are mastering their gardening skills, and they are ready to take on curriculum that we offer if they choose to. And then we currently do not have any Level 3 schools, because starting this spring will be the first time that TKC is offering a nutrition and garden-based education to schools. And we hope to provide this to 7 to 11 schools in the spring. We support schools through two initiatives. Our first is our Edible Garden Initiative. We have launched a new website that has been designed for teachers to easily access garden tips and lessons, and we are currently building out a Memphis Regional tab on this page that will highlight specific schools and specific happenings going on with the Kitchen Community in Memphis. We've also developed regional theme gardens to make gardening fun, educational, and to support a diversity of crops. And we will continually provide seed, seedlings, and soil amendments to all of our schools to support the theme gardens and to support the school gardens. We also provide a series of professional development workshops. These workshops are seasonal. We always host them at a school with a learning garden, and we focus on gardening skills such as planting, growing, watering, harvesting. We also focus on curriculum connections and making sure that we engage the teachers in some cooking activity or cooking demo that comes straight from things they can harvest from their garden. Our second initiative is our Garden-Based Curriculum Initiative. We've partnered with a national nonprofit called Common Threads out of Chicago. Common Threads is an industry leader in nutrition-based education, and together we have written nutrition and garden-based lessons for elementary and middle schools. And this is the curriculum that 7 to 11 schools will participate in in the fall, I mean, I'm sorry, in the spring. Beyond these initiatives, in Memphis, we have taken a strong interest in working with schools to conduct more community engagement and to support their school communities. So this is a picture from Shady Grove Elementary. We hosted, we helped host a Learning Garden Community Fair at their garden, and the school community was invited, the school invited adopters, different partners. There was an attendance of just over 100 people. The school felt really, really proud of this. And that picture on the bottom is our green smoothies that we make when we're invited to community events. It's a combination of kale and berries. It's a really good way for us to engage with school communities and to connect the learning garden to healthy food. All of this would not be, we would not be able to be as successful as we've been if it hadn't been for the district being so supportive of us. We work very closely with Curriculum and Instruction, Nutrition Services, Coordinated School Health, Family Community Engagement, Facilities, and we're so grateful for the opportunity that we've had to do this in Memphis. I have a list of all of our schools, if anybody is interested, I don't know where I can put this, but, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, Kitchen Community's really been a fantastic partner in this work. If the board remembers, about 18 months ago, we received a grant, a private grant, so we can get these gardens off the ground, and I think it just exposes so many of our kids, particularly our inner-city kids, to gardening and both the learning aspect and then the healthy eating aspect. And I must say, Mr. Chair, that my son brought me a kale and celery and carrot salad from the Learning Garden they have over at Ottawa, so I've seen it up in action. So, I did eat some of them.
I've noticed you look a little healthier today.
So just want to thank them for their partnership.
And I echo that. Thank you for your partnership. I'd like to also acknowledge that Board Member Bibbs is here, so nice to see you. And with that, I think we'll move on to 6.2, I guess it is, or, you know, for, with Board Member McCormick, and the superintendent evaluation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, we have, over the last couple of weeks, several weeks, conducted the superintendent's evaluation. Each of you were given a survey. If you filled out, we'll return, and we enlisted Dr. Barbara Prescott to take our answers and compile a report, and she is here tonight. So each of you have a brown manila envelope, and that contains the report. Dr. Prescott is going to present the findings. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Barbara Prescott.
Thank you, Board Member McCormick, and Chairman Caldwell. Congratulations on your being elected to the Board Chair. Haven't seen you, and I appreciate you moving me up in the agenda. I really enjoy coming to board meetings, but I don't like to stay to the end of them because sometimes that gets a little long. I do appreciate the opportunity to work with this board. It's always a pleasure to work with school boards, and a particular pleasure to work with this one, because, as you know, I have a real affinity for your work, for this community, for the children, mostly for the children that you serve. And so you do have, at your desk, a report. There's a cover letter from me. There is an executive summary, and stapled to that summary is an attachment that goes into more detail. I'm not going to read everything, you can do that, but I would like to hit some highlights. And first of all, I'd like to commend all of you for the conscientious way that you addressed this evaluation. Giving your superintendent input and assessing his progress, or her progress, whichever the case would be, on goals is really one of the most important duties that a school board has. And the sole purpose of the evaluation, or the main purpose of that evaluation, is to really lay the groundwork and be instructive for continuous improvement. So just for the public purpose, I'm going to go talk a little bit about the instrument, the process, and do a few highlights. I will say to you that I have had an opportunity to share this input, all of your input, with the superintendent, but as you know, this is a corporate body, so this final report, I've taken care to compute it in a way that it would reflect what a majority of the board is thinking. So you will remember that this, that the instrument that we used is one that you've used before. We did eliminate, it has six areas of competency that are widely considered to be areas that are important for superintendents to be successful in their districts. And then there were five objectives, performance objectives. We did eliminate the objective around the annual improvement on test scores because of the problem that the state had this year in getting everyone tested. So the board decided to eliminate that one before we, you filled out your evaluations. This, the evaluation was divided into three parts. The first was, again, these categories of competency. The second were the performance objectives. And then thirdly, you had an opportunity to, in an open-ended way, to discuss what you believe were the superintendent's strengths, areas for improvement, and to make suggestions for an improvement plan. If I would have a recommendation for you before going over this, I would say that you may want to consider relooking at your instrument, because every so often you need to do that. Although the first part, again, are commonly considered to be competencies that you ought to be looking at a superintendent on, the objectives should really flow from what your suggestions are this year. And so all of your suggestions for professional development are listed in the appendix, and I think that it would be a positive thing for the board to work together with the superintendent, look at those areas, prioritize them, determine how you might measure them, and perhaps use them as you develop any new instrument that you would use. If you will look on, this was a five-point scale. If you'll look on page two, I've given you a chart. Now, I'll say this, that I feel like that I can say that the board, again, took this seriously, and this is a realistic assessment. You will notice that the superintendent did score at expectation or above the expectations of the majority of the board on all areas. And all, actually 50, there were 35 indicators on the first part and 14 on the second part. So he scored at expectations or above for a majority of the board on all of those. But there were no wild scores, in other words, you know, we didn't have, they were all in the area of being at or above expectation, nothing below or significantly below or significantly above. And I think what that indicates is that the board is pleased, the superintendent is doing a good job. They believe that he's on task, but, and that there has been a lot of progress, but there is much work to be done. There are two ways that I have reported this information to you, and I'll tell you why. First of all, I computed mean scores, again, because this is a corporate body. So the way I did that would be, I would take Board Member Jones' evaluation, and on the five individual items under Board Relationships, I would find the mean score, and that would be what her score was for that area. Then I took all nine and again found a mean score. So you have a numerical score there, but there are times when an average doesn't really tell the real story. There are some times where there might be outline scores. And so for every individual area here, I went back to determine whether the superintendent, how he either met, didn't meet, or was above expectations of the board in all areas. There are, there was one area on both parts, both the evaluation categories and the objectives, where an outline score did skew the mean score. And so that just means that I went back and counted, and in those cases, the superintendent either met or was above expectations of five or more of the board, of the board members. So if you'll look again at page two, again, you'll see that under the evaluation categories, the superintendent scored above expectations out on five of six of those items, pretty much in the range of 3.53, which was the one area that really, there were a majority of the board that, that saw him as above expectations, even though that fell a little short of a 3.6, to his high score, which was a 4.2. So in these, what I would call leadership competencies, these broad competencies that are necessary for a superintendent to be successful, the superintendent is meeting your expectations and actually, in most cases, scoring slightly above of a majority of the board. You will note that actually, Community Relations was the, was the, his top area in that, in that area, and there were a lot of comments, very positive comments about that. If you'll turn, and again, I'm just kind of hitting the highlights to page three, you will see on the objectives, the superintendent was at expectations in four areas and above on one area. Again, this was one of the cases where there was an outline score that skewed that, but in reality, a majority of the board members felt that on Objective 1, that the superintendent actually was above expectations. But these, these are areas that are more concrete. It's understandable that they might be a bit below what the first set of areas are, but again, very strong and solid scores here. The area on this one where continuous improvement was the area where he was the highest. If there is an area where there is need for improvement, on the, in the first group, you'll note that Staff and Personnel Relationships would be that particular area where there is some room for improvement. You gave some very candid comments around that, and that, there are some comments in the, the suggestions for development, as well as the areas improvement, that I hope can be instructive to you and useful to you as you move forward. In that area, I will say, and in the finance area, which was his second highest score, but in that area, in both of those cases, the board, a majority of the board commented that they had seen improvements but were looking for even better things this year. And keep in mind, this is the evaluation of 2015-16. At the end of the bullet points, I have summarized some of your comments around, around the commendations. One particular thing that was very clear and almost unanimous, if not unanimous, was that the superintendent is very focused on Destination 2025. You see him as a very hard worker, very able to relate, and someone who is in the community trying to listen, to make good decisions. The areas, again, for improvement, you look for some areas of improvement in getting reports on time so that you can make good decisions, having updates so that you can be advocates. Also, from an academic standpoint, there was an area around career and career education and doing some things in that area that matches the workforce needs of the community. So in, again, in general, I would say that the board members express their support for Superintendent Hopson and commend him for his commitment to the school district, with some very positive and important areas for improvement. One of the things that, having been on a school board, it really struck me that for the most part, this board is very much in agreement with each other. There may be a few, in a few areas where a person had a particular thought or a particular feeling, in which case, as I said, all of the comments were shared with the superintendent. But for the most part, you all are kind of remarkably together on what you are looking at. If you will look at, I'll just take you to the, if you'll look at the appendix, you'll see that I have given mean scores, numerical scores, for every single indicator that was on this evaluation, and have listed all of your comments. Under Opportunities for Improvement, I tried to organize those under some general headings. The comments on the positive things are so nice, they'd be good for the superintendent to read, and he'll feel good about those, and he can wrap those up and put them under the Christmas tree and feel pretty good about them. And they're all, they all are very indicative of things that I think we would agree with. Under the Opportunities for Improvement, I did try to categorize these, because I felt like that the usefulness of this document, that that would improve the usefulness of the document. And then if you'll look over to the areas for the superintendent to address in professional development, there are about nine or 10 of those areas. I listed, again, only those areas where a majority of the board agreed. So if you didn't, don't see your particular comments on here, just know that they were shared, and I discussed that with you as I talked with you on the phone for that. But in this list, this is a list that I think can be the very most instructive for you and can really lay out the work of your superintendent and, and the district. So again, a pleasure. I commend you for doing this. I commend the superintendent for his hard work, and I know that it's not easy. It's not easy sometimes to work for your one boss, which would be your wife, of course, but, but it certainly isn't always easy when you have a corporate body to which you are responsible. However, as I said, this, this body is particularly together in most areas, and that is a sign of a board that has come together, that focuses on the work of the district. And Superintendent Hopson, I commend you for your good evaluation, as well as the board members for the effort and the conscientious way that you, that you went about this.
Thank you, Dr. Prescott. I appreciate your efforts. I imagine this was kind of like you herding nine cats, trying to get us to answer your questions and track us down. I appreciate your efforts, and I think the report is a very succinct, accurate report of how we feel. Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you to let any board members ask any questions.
I'll recognize Board Member Orville.
Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you to let any board members ask any questions.
I'll recognize Board Member Orville. Board Member Wood. Looks like you got off. And I'd just take this moment to say that, in the couple of months I've been chair, I have much more appreciation for your ability to work with all of us, so thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the board for their honest feedback. Dr. Prescott went over the report with myself and Mr. McCormick, and I really do appreciate and accept the feedback that I've received from the board. I also want to thank you all for the nice comments and for the continued support. I really am and remain humbled and honored to be the superintendent of Shelby County Schools. I also want to thank staff, school leaders and teachers, because folks are out here working their heart every day on behalf of students, and I just want to acknowledge their hard work, and thank you for the positive evaluation.
Without seeing any of your lights, we'll move on to, I think it's 8.3, that's the Charter Advisory Committee First Quarter Recommendations. I believe Board Member Bibbs, are you going to start us out on that?
Actually, I thought that you were going to start us out on that, but okay, no problem. Are we first going to read the recommendations and then go that route, or?
Well, I would defer to Mrs. McKinney, since she was integral in, in doing this.
But I guess before she gets started, since, as far as actually presenting the recommendations, I'll just say that I do want to thank everyone that participated in this process. It was a lot of, lot of long meetings. It took each section, I think we had a total of four different separate subcommittees, who probably met on average four times, so, and probably in, on average, those four times that they met, those meetings ran anywhere from two to three hours. So I just want to say thank you for all of the hard work that's gone into what's being presented tonight, and definitely a hard task, so thank you for asking, answering the call.
And I'd like to echo those comments, I think that, you know, from the things that I reviewed, it was very good diligent work, and as, as Board Member Bibbs said, a lot of meetings, and we appreciate you taking your time to volunteer to do this work, and I could tell by the recommendations that it was a severe, sincere and honest effort to work in the best interest of our children and the community. So thank you very much for your hard work and many hours. With that, I'll ask, Ms. McKinney?
Thank you, Chair Caldwell and Board Member Bibbs. I want to first say that you have some of your Charter Advisory Committee members here in the audience, and if I may take liberty to ask them to please stand, so that you can see them. Included in here is also the leaders of the committee. We have Chair Cynthia Allen, and we have Co-Chair Luther Mercer. Thank you. So what I will do, you all had a meeting, a joint meeting with the IBO and Community Engagement Committees, I believe, the week before Thanksgiving, I think that was the 17th of November. And during that time, they presented the 20, I believe, 27 recommendations, recommendations. And I'm not going to go read through all of them, I'm going to try to highlight them under each category, but those, and with that meeting, the board had some, some questions, and had some areas that, and requests that they asked of the committee. So what you will find in the recommendations as well are those requests that are along with those particular categories of recommendations. So I will, I will go through these briefly. So your first set is your Joint Subcommittee Recommendation, which essentially says to establish a charter partnership council that will provide feedback and make recommendations to the SES Board, similar to the areas that they're currently working on around accountability and oversight, funding and administrative fee, facilities, communications, adequate and appropriate access, shared services, and strategic partnerships in the areas of legislation and academic. Also under there, part of the responsibilities would be to provide feedback and make recommendations towards a process for evaluation accountability for the district authorizer functions. The next set of recommendations came out of the Funding and Administrative Fee Committee, and that was, I'd like to recommend, the Chair and Co-Chair Lynn Johnson and Grant Monda. They had several recommendations. First, Quality Authorizer Recommendation, which essentially adopts, recommends adopting the National Association of Charter School Authorizers Principles and Standards for Authorizing. The next set of recommendations from that committee are around transparency and communications, essentially providing information to charter schools around funding, and what, what does go to charter schools and what does not, and also providing an onboarding session, an annual update session, focused on funding for charter schools, covering areas of school funding around state, local, and federal sources, and a baseline understanding about district funding. Then there was Shared Goals with Limited Resources, essentially stating that in areas where there are limited resources, the district should strongly consider options that may benefit children and staff in charter schools, as well as traditional schools. The Administrator Authorizer Fee, again, this recommendation is two, three parts. Authorizer Fee will use, be used exclusively for authorizing responsibilities, as defined by NACA. There was a recommendation around what that fee should look like, it'd be a ramp-up fee from 2% to 3% by 0.5% each year, so starting fee would be 2%, second year would be 2.5%, third year 3%. And that all schools will come under the, that particular agreement. Then there were Shared Policies and Priorities, essentially, the, the, there were recommendations around potential joint legislative efforts, policy and legislative efforts by both charter school, community, and the district. Under that, I want to bring that there were some specific board requests that they recognized and would like, will continue to work on, and that is, addressing what's the amount needed for authorizing is over the amount collected from the authorizer fee, and how does the district justify the resources spent on authorizer functions when it's difficult to split out individual expenses outside of the charter school office, and then consider a percentage of the fee to be set aside for costs that are difficult to split out. Then we have the Accountability and Oversight Committee, and essentially, they recommended that there be an academic framework for students, parents, and educators to evaluate school performance, that once the data becomes available, then a annual report of performance on school performance framework and the operation scorecard will be made, that schools not meeting the minimum outline expectations, that will be communicated to them within a specified amount of time, and giving them clear direction on how that will operate. And this, one of the things, another specific recommendation is that if they do not meet the performance expectations, within two years after receiving that notice, the charter schools would be recommended for revocation. Then the next set are administrative timeline recommendations around how that process would take place procedurally. And again, the board requests around that particular set was around the operational fiscal issues that would cause immediate closure of the charter school, making sure that those, both of those things are included, review the weights of the academic performance with the operational scorecard, to see what point, at what point a charter school might have operational issues, overtake academic issues and vice versa, and then review discipline reporting processes from the charter schools to the district, when is it appropriate for the charter schools to communicate disciplinary measures used by the charter school to the district, and what process would be used to, to communicate that information. And then there is the accountability needed to ensure that charter schools are providing adequate discipline information. Then we had the Facilities Committee, which was chaired by Shep Wilbon and Sarita Butler, and let me go back to the Accountability and Oversight Subcommittee, I'm sorry, Brad, that was chaired by Brad Leon and Representative Ramesh Akbari. Going back to the Facilities Subcommittee, they have recommendations around the type of use and allocation recommendations, and so type, type of use, type of facilities, use available, and those were models like co-location, sole occupancy, and shared use. And then facility allocation would be, there would be a criteria used to prioritize placement, and that would include academic growth and student achievement, alignment to priority district needs, enrollment demand, and supplemental considerations. Then there was a, a set of recommendations around access to facilities, facilities, which include what the cost would, what the cost for leasing or purchase might be, and what would be entailed in that particular agreement. And just to summarize that, the board request around that was to review the challenges to co-location of schools and revisit as a potential model for facility use. And then finally, we had the Communications Subcommittee, which was chaired, which is chaired by Natalia Powers, and there were two recommendations out of that, that the district, because the district is composed of many school types, that communications made to communities should reflect and support the focus on quality schools regardless of the model or operator type. And then finally, navigating the current landscape of the traditional charter schools can be complicated and confusing, and that the SES, in conjunction with charter schools, should take steps to make finding information and engaging in processes such as enrollment, registration, information sharing, et cetera, as coordinated and streamlined as possible. Again, there were some board requests around that work, and that was to discuss opportunities to provide clear information about discipline policies, and also, is it possible to have one place where all discipline policies are housed for ease of access and review? You have two appendices that are attached to that. The first appendices are the NACA Authorized Principles and Standards, and the second appendices was a, a draft proposed facilities use policy.
Okay, I see a light from Board Member Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did go over this document when I first received it, and also with some of the committee members today, and much of it, I agree, I think that the areas that concerned me were probably things that, number one, under the transparency, that were, I guess, the committee took at a given, but I didn't in reading it, in terms of the district sharing certain things and the district providing, it was my wish that it be reciprocal, that also those things, that, that, that information and transparency flow both ways, and I think that probably was discussed in the committees, but it wasn't really clear to me in reading this, but I think from the conversation, it was discussed. The two areas that I, that I took issue with, and, and at this point, I'm not prepared to support, were the authorizer fee, and I just have, I don't have enough information to understand the 2% versus the 2.5 versus the 3, and what cost that actually represents in terms of, or will represent. I understand this is a draft, so that may become clearer for me, but I do believe that there should be transparency. I'm a firm believer in itemizing and putting a dollar figure to, and tier levels to most of the things that were discussed, and so I realize we're probably not there yet, this is the starting point, but I'm not there yet on these authorizer fee recommendations, because I just don't know, I don't have what I need to make a decision. The next area is the facilities report, 18 and 19, of course, are very general, 21 to 25 on the facilities. At this point, I'm really strongly not prepared to commit to any proposals at this particular time, so I really think that in terms of these facilities, the needs are going to vary and change, depending on the facility, the location, who wants it, and the needs of the parents in particular in that community, and not just whether it's a high-performing charter. But I am particularly concerned about what the, what the parents whose children would be attended at would need, so while I think that all of these things are areas that should be considered, I'm not at the point where I can say that I'll agree that these are binding, when we, if, if we're asked to adopt this document as is, there are, there are some areas that I have some concern with. But overall, I think it is a great effort, a good start, and many of my concerns have been addressed, but those two areas, I'm still waiting for more information on.
Board Member Bibbs, is your light on?
Thank you, Chair. So first, before I talk about the document itself, I do want to thank my colleagues for spending the time, doing some one-on-one meetings, as well as attending our conversation about it when we rolled it out at the committee meeting last, two weeks ago, because I know it was a lot, a lot of these things in here, we have had conversations around whether we agree or disagree, but I just want to definitely thank you for showing up to be able to, for us to be able to push this work forward. My areas of concern, I think, around what has happened, will definitely always be around facilities. Co-location is always a concern for me, and what that looks like, you know, trying to collate, co-locate in the same building, and I realize that that was one of the things listed here regarding facilities, and like Chair, like Board Member Jones just said, that being clear with defined costs, because a lot of times, we can put it out there, and we don't necessarily know what the costs are until we get into it. So as we move forward, I'm looking forward to more clear defined costs.
Board Member Love?
I want to echo some of the same things my board member stated, especially dealing with the co-location. But one thing that I don't see, and I know this is a work in progress, the discipline, there's nothing about the discipline, or, you know, how children are accepted, that's something that I would want to see. And also, in the facility recommendation, there's nothing in here about the charter saying that they will maintain the building, that they will take care of the maintenance. So as we begin to, well, as we continue this conversation, that is something that I definitely want to, well, talk more about.
So those are the, the lights, so I have a few comments. That's right, go ahead. All right, so, so I would like to suggest to board members, there's a document handed out that covers a lot of this stuff, and some of the individual recommendations around the, the cost of buildings, and some of the questions that have been raised are answered in those, but I would, I would get you all, you know, I would suggest that you understand that this is, this is a framework, very similar to what happened with the TPC recommendations. And we didn't adopt every TPC recommendation, in fact, it went back to the administration, we had additional meetings, and then we honed it down. I would expect that, that it would be, and my recommendation, and I have one, and I'll give it to you in a minute, would be that we go on and use these as guidelines or principles to, to work within, and so we can direct, go back to the committees and, and give them some kind of direction about how they should hammer out these things. Nothing will be binding until it's in policy, but I think that too much hard work has been done, too much good work has been done, to do anything that would stall this effort. And so I would, I would hope that we could get to the point next week, that we could, you know, adopt these in principles, but not in, as I think I heard two board members say, binding, and these would not be binding, but they certainly would be serious considerations that we ought to incorporate in, in our final product and reflect on, and then in the meantime, I would reach out to, to Mrs. McKinney, and, and perhaps some of your questions can be answered before the, before the work session next week. So with that, I'll let you go first, and I'll, Mc-
Just, Mr. Chair, just process question for you and the board. I think that the, I want to commend the committee, particularly outside folks who put in a lot of time and did a lot of good work. We've taken a look at the recommendations, I think that all of the concerns appear very valid, and I think there may be a few more concerns. So I'm just trying to understand, Mr. Chair, I'm assuming that if you guys can adopt this framework, we'll still have some time to go in and try to put some tissue on the bones, as it were, and then also, I guess, provide, I guess, additional insight and further recommendations around where we're trying to get to. Is that accurate?
That, that would be my expectation. That would be my expectations. And I think when we started this process, we realized this was going to be a living document, and we anticipated that there would be an ongoing for years, probably, as the, as the district morphs into whatever it's going to become, and whatever other kind of school might be operated, so that we can have a framework and a process to make the important decisions, and make sure that they have been informed by the people that are going to be affected by it, and the people that have an interest in the district. So, to directly answer your question, I would expect that this would be a back and forth, and then we would hopefully get to something that probably everybody won't be satisfied with, but, but my understanding is if nobody's completely satisfied, then you've come up with a good agreement. So, with that, what I would like for board members to consider for the next meeting would be a recommendation that's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education accept the first set of recommendations, including Appendix One from the Charter Advisory Committee to be utilized as the guiding principles and directions for development of charter school-related policy and future recommendations from the, from the CAC, which is the Charter Advisory Committee. It's further recommended that the accompanying Appendix Two be submitted to the administration for its review. So, I think with that, I think that answers some of the concerns.
If you don't mind if I interject, Mr. Chair, during the committee meeting, you may have actually voiced several legal concerns as it relates to whether or not the recommendations as written are consistent with Tennessee law. As the members of the board know, Tennessee law really sets forth a framework for managing and controlling a school system in Tennessee. It set forth, it sets forth different roles and responsibilities of both the board and the director of school, also known as the superintendent. We have serious concerns that we're still trying to evaluate, that is why we raise several of the questions that are in the report, that we believe need to be answered prior to the board acting to accept this. So, I would be concerned with anything that signals that the board is accepting these recommendations, whether you call it temporarily, or guiding principles, or whatever, because I do believe that they, they raise grave concerns. For example, in the area of revocation, whether or not the revocation provisions are consistent with the obligation of this school system to provide an adequate education to the students in its custody. Second of all, well, I won't go point by point, but when you look at the recommendations, there are serious concerns. I've offered the committee chairs an opportunity to come to my office and meet with me and my staff, so we can evaluate, you know, our concerns, and see if we can find some comfort level that we could endorse them as being consistent with Tennessee law.
So, I appreciate your concerns, and as I said earlier, I think there's plenty of time before anything is adopted as policy or any permanent rules of the district, to have those discussions. I think that Tennessee law sets out a lot of things that we, that's the minimum standard. That doesn't mean that, certainly, we can't usurp state law, but we can put different things that are particular to our district, and I think that's what we've tried to do by having all these representatives to work on it. So, so I would say that, you know, no, one of the concerns that board members had at first was, was this going to get completed? And so, we charged the committee with coming back to us by November, and I think they did, did a heck of a job to get through this work and present it to us. So, I would say that I think everybody's valid concerns ought to be addressed, and nobody, you know, my, my understanding is that things that were put in the quote-unquote parking lot were not there to be left overnight or forever. They were to be then incorporated even before the final product comes out. So, I think your, your concerns would be, I think they're valid, and I think they will be addressed. And I think that I wish, I think that, you know, I spoke with the superintendent, that we could commit as a board to try to have our, our work part of this done by, at the latest, the early part or middle part of January. So, you, so you can imagine, I would think there's plenty of time for you to have a meeting with any of these members of the committee that you, that you want to express your concerns with. Anyway, and so next, I'll go to Board Member Bibbs.
Just a point of clarity from General Counsel. So, you're saying you want to extend an invitation to those committee, each committee chairs? Or, I'm just trying to, point of clarification.
No, I pointed out that I extended to the two co-chairs of the compact committee, not the individual subcommittees.
Okay.
Board Member Jones?
Thank you. I would feel more comfortable if we allowed those meetings to take place. I don't, I know that a lot of work has been done, and we're moving, I think, in the right direction. However, not having had those conversations, you don't have the benefit of understanding or knowing how those, that outcome may or may not, may not affect an adoption of these guiding principles. So, I don't see the harm, and I would prefer to wait and let those conversations take place, let the legal issues be vetted and addressed, and then, it appears maybe we could have a 30-day delay. Based on your conversation, there, we could do this in January. I don't know that we're hard and fast tied to having to have to do this, this month, but I certainly wouldn't want to put it off a long time, but it appears that there is some, an invitation has already been established, and could take the next, till the next board meeting to answer those legal questions, and then I would feel more comfortable doing it that way.
Okay, so, so I think we, okay, now, Board Member Bibbs.
I'm sorry, I know this is my third time, but I will just say this, since General Counsel has mentioned some things, I think, I just need clarification on those things as well before we move forward. I'll personally reach out to you, just so we can have a conversation.
Board Member Love?
I have a question for Board Member Bibbs. Once the, just clarifying question, once the recommendations were brought forth by the, I guess, the, the, the subcommittees, who, how was, how was it voted on to say, this is what we're going to select? And I ask that because I know the two people that he's asking to speak with, the chair and the co-chair, I just think maybe he should speak to the chairs of those committees as well, General Counsel. General Counsel?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I was asking her about how the voting process went to make the recommendations, and it may be better for you to speak to the chairs of each committee, you know, versus just the chair and the co-chair.
So, I absolutely agree with that. That's why I was asking the clarifying question around, who did you extend the invitation to? Because on the voting day, when they actually came to the recommendations where they voted on, it was very contentious. Nothing was a unanimous vote. So, I want you to understand from all aspects as we move forward.
So, that means that, that means that a committee could have made the recommendation, well, the committee chair could have made a recommendation, but the committee as a whole may have voted down that one committee's recommendation, right? Board Member Bibbs? Okay. So, that's why I'm just suggesting that you meet with the chairs. Thank you.
So, I think Mrs. McKinney was at some of those meetings, and I think she laid out in some of the notes, the actual votes in every committee, so maybe you could shed some light on that?
Yes, I did. I sent to all board members the minutes from all of the subcommittee's meetings, and I also sent to you all the full committee's voting. And so, a lot of them, there were, we had, we voted as a slate, I think, I can't remember how many, I think we pulled eight of those, and they voted as a slate, and that was unanimous. And then you have the, I can't think of what the different, what the different voting was on the ones that were pulled, but you do have a record of the voting from the full committee.
Board Member Orgul.
This kind of skirts on a point of order, but just procedurally, why are we even discussing this anymore? Your legal counsel just said that he's got problems with the document, and then we've got to go reconcile those problems? I mean, I, I mean, I'll call the question, but I don't know that we do that, Dr. Schulz, but I mean, I think we should stop talking about this. Your legal counsel just said, "I've got issues with it," which probably should have been resolved before the meeting, and I wish they had been, because we wouldn't have spent 30 minutes talking about it. But in my opinion, I think we need to move on. So, if we can call the question or whatever, but I think the discussion should end, reconcile. Ms. Bibbs, Ms. Love had some good suggestions for people to sit down and talk about again, and let's move on.
So, I think somewhere, there's a disconnect, that nobody is saying to adopt anything binding that would be counter to law. We would have to have a policy. Is that not correct, or something, in something binding, that we couldn't even talk about this?
Sure. A position can be binding even though it's not set forth in policy. So, voting on guiding principles are, in fact, what you're guided by, and that is binding. It doesn't have to be put into policy in order to be binding.
Then, since I made the recommendation, I would ask you to look at this recommendation and put wording in there that makes it so that we have a framework within which to move forward.
Typically, when a committee issues a report, you know, the board can vote to accept the report or receive the report, and you're officially receiving the report, if that's your pleasure. You don't have to vote to make it a guiding principle. You certainly could vote to receive the report, and then you have it as your record, the administration can respond, legal can respond.
Yes, I'm going to let Dr. Schulz explain the policy.
You have a policy currently that when a, an item is on the work session agenda, it automatically moves over to the business meeting unless the motion, object of further consideration, is adopted. I see two ways to not deal with this at the next meeting. One is to leave it on the agenda of the business meeting, and then postpone it to the next meeting, or someone bring an object of further consideration, which would require a majority vote, which would suppress it from being on next week's agenda.
Board Member Woods?
To the parliamentarian, it's, it's not unprecedented that someone could simply choose to pull the item from the agenda if they so choose. So, to Mr. Orgul's point, if there is point of contention, there is a week to continue to make the sausage, and then the executive committee comprised of both the superintendent and the board chair should be making that determination of what's going to be on the, of what we're going to discuss next week. Quite honestly, this is very painful to, to sit through, because the superintendent and the board chair should be putting the agenda together, advised by his legal counsel. Once the legal counsel said there's an issue, we should, and Mr. Orgul's point, move on, and then let's fix it. If it's going, if it's on the agenda next week, great. If it's decided to pull it, then pull it. But we got a lot more to discuss, and I got a soccer game to get to, selfishly.
And postpone it if there's a problem.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, and this will go forward, and then we'll deal with it at the, at the work session. And, I mean, at the business meeting, I would also, once again, thank all the community partners, the administration, and everybody worked on, that worked on this, because I think there's a lot of good work in here, and we will get, we will move forward. So, thank you. So, next I have, 7.1.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. I want to share a bit of good news with you. Thanks to the, I think, the board's foresight and a very strong Benefits Task Force comprised of a number of retirees, we have secured a much better life insurance deal for our I want to just share. I know that, that this process has been long and arduous, but I think it's also been very a testament of what happens when people work together. I just want to share with you, I asked the HR team to give you a quick presentation, but want to share with you a couple quotes from a couple, from a couple of our Benefits Task members. Daisy Cleaves, I'm sure you all know her, "We got to work with everybody and give our input, and it mattered, so this was a good process." Sarah Lewis, Benefits Task Force member, "The SES staff was professional, prepared and, prepared and pleasant." And what you're going to see is a substantial rate reduction and some good collaboration. So, I want to turn it over to the HR team.
That Hobson, members of the board, and I'll try to be brief but thorough, so that Commissioner Woods can get to his soccer game. But again, to the superintendent's point, we use these first two slides to just really call out the extent to which the retirees that were appointed by the superintendent and the board to participate in helping the district come up with solutions for retiree life insurance, particularly how to address increasing costs. Those task force members were just totally engaged in this process. They sat through discussions about how our life insurance proposals work. They sat through discussions about cost. They even participated on the task force, I'm sorry, the committee that evaluated the bids that, that were submitted as part of this RFP. And let me point out that with this RFP, there were a total of about a dozen, I'm sorry, a dozen companies that were solicited, and seven actually submitted bids. The Benefits Task Force members, which included teachers, principals, retirees, and union leaders, were fully involved in the evaluation team. They sat through finalist presentation, participated in the scoring. And let me say that they were just really instrumental in getting us to a point to where we're able to bring to you a really, really favorable recommendation here tonight. And if there are members of the Benefits Task Force present tonight, just want to ask you to stand so that we can definitely applaud you for your work. And now, to the really exciting news for our employees and our retirees. If you look at this slide, you'll see the, the current MetLife budgeted cost for active basic life insurance. That cost is approximately, well, 2.1 million. The proposed Minnesota life cost, and this is a three-year rate guarantee, is substantially This is a huge win for our employees. When you go down to the retiree life insurance, the current cost with MetLife is 8.4 million dollars, and that's for life insurance for about 9,000 retirees. When you look at the proposed rate from Minnesota Life, again, substantially less at 3.2 million. And that allows us, again, to keep the retirees' coverage at its, at its current levels. And, and let me say that the retirees understood that the district needed to get some support from them in terms of how to pay for the retiree life insurance. So, to that end, the Benefits Task Force members, the retirees, they actually unanimously voted to pay 25% of the premium to keep their current coverage. So, this made it really easy for us to bring the proposal forward that we're bringing forward tonight. So, the retirees get to keep their, their current coverage and pay 25% of the premium. And as you see an example there, the average retiree life insurance benefit is about $28,000. So, that would be a totally monthly premium of 50. So that would be a totally monthly premium of $57.20. With the 25% of that, the retirees paying $14.30, the district picking up $42.90 of that cost. So again, with this proposal from Minnesota Life, the district would, on an annualized basis, experience a cost avoidance of about $6 million when compared to the 10 and 1/2 billion that we have currently budgeted for the coverage with MetLife. And I'll go to the final slide, and this slide also shows that even for those employees who seek to increase the level of coverage that they have, up to the maximum, the rates that have been proposed by Minnesota Life are significantly less than the rates currently with MetLife. So just to close this out, for the active employees, the retirees, and the district, I mean, this is just a win-win-win, and we just really want to thank the superintendent and the board for just really calling out that we needed to get more engaged, have more collaboration with the retirees, and this just demonstrates what good results we can get through collaboration.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm sure the superintendent was wondering why some of us was quiet during his evaluation, but we couldn't just give you too many pats on the back, so I'll save mine for now. I think you saw in your evaluation that your superintendent is never too dogmatic in your positions where you're not willing to say, hold up, maybe we can do better. And I think this was an example where we were faced with a $10 million expense. Instead of saying we're going to put this off on retirees and existing employees, we said, hey, can our staff go back and do a better job at finding a vendor or provider that can both meet our needs as well as something that we can afford? And so I think that's what we saw here. I read the article by the Commercial Appeal yesterday, a very positive article speaking to the savings that was put forth here. This is a positive for the district, but it says that if we don't get it right the first time, we can go back and get it right the second time. And so I think it speaks to the wisdom of this board and to the staff that you have that can get the job done, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Board Member Bibbs.
Superintendent, I just want to say thank you to you and your staff around understanding when we push back, we know that great things can happen. So I think this is a great example of collaboration when you talk about a Benefits Task Force as well as just an idea around how staff can, when pushed, can create a great product. So I absolutely appreciate the hard work of HR and the Benefits Task Force team on this. Thank you.
So I was remiss in not acknowledging that Board Member Avant had arrived, and so with that, I'll notice your lights on, would you go ahead?
I too just want to applaud the due diligence of the staff and the superintendent for going back and reviewing the information and really taking to heart some of the concerns that we as board members have. But I also want to really thank the retirees who gave their time to really help us get through this process. I know that it wasn't an easy process. Thank you, Ms. AC, appreciate your time and your effort. Please convey that to other members of the Retiree Benefits Committee. We appreciate that you guys helped kind of walk us through what was a difficult piece, but I'm very happy to see where we are. And again, I just want to applaud the due diligence of the staff.
Board Member Jones.
Thank you. It goes without saying, I think, to superintendent and the staff, but I really want to thank the Benefits Task Force. This is, I think, a model that we need to look at going forward. From day one on this board, I've had requests to be involved at an earlier stage, to be involved from employees, our voices heard, and we just see what can happen when people who have the most at stake are at the table. And so I commend them wholeheartedly for attending these meetings and helping with this outcome that we have. It's a win-win, as Mr. Robinson said, and I'm proud of the work that the district did, but I'm especially proud of the members of the task force who gave their time to make sure that we have the outcome that we have. So thank you.
Board Member Love.
Exactly what Board Member Jones just stated. Thank you.
Board Member Orgul.
Superintendent, I know you play golf, so I'll give you a little analogy. You, he does, I play, oh, you play with him, is that bad? But you know, sometimes off the first tee, you take a mulligan. So you took a mulligan on this one. And, but so with practice and doing these RFPs earlier and getting out in front of the things, I think we probably would have saved the district some money, as we eventually did. And you got, you saw where you got seven people to participate. So I think that's important, and I think from talking to asking people after this process why companies didn't participate, it was timing, shortness of RFP, too close to when they had to start it. But I want to, and so this was, this was well done, and it saved the district $6 million. When we were doing the budgeting last year, how much did we budget for this item?
You remember, Ms. Johnson, I think it was probably $7 million, I think it's...
Yeah, we did not budget for this item. I think we budgeted about $6 million.
Well, if you didn't budget for it, how could you budget $6 million?
Yeah. So we always, we always assume that there would be some cost to benefits. We didn't assume the increase in terms of Minnesota Life, the $8.9 million.
Yeah, I think we missed that, we didn't budget for the increase.
That's right.
So what was, what was the item, the amount before the increase?
It was about $6 million, but I'll double check.
So we actually were going to spend less?
Yes.
Going for, okay, that's good. That's a good thing. That's what I was asking. Thanks.
With that, we'll move to 7.2, schools consolidation considerations.
Thank you. Eric, clicker, clicker somewhere. Really excited to present the first phase of our footprint analysis to you. As you all know, this board has closed over 20 schools the last three years. Been very aggressive about trying to be efficient, but despite the hard work that the board has done, we know we still have other schools that need to be closed. But what we've learned over this journey, board, is that simply closing schools and sending oftentimes our most fragile kids to outdated and bad facilities does nothing to improve student achievement. So what we have decided to do, as we've looked at the data, is we want to continue down the path that we started down with West Haven. If you all recall, West Haven a few years ago, we took three very poor-performing schools that were all around the corner from each other, and we consolidated them into one school, and there's just such vibrance at that school now. They've got a wonderful school leader, and we're expecting huge things from West Haven. We also, in the process, were very efficient because we were able to eliminate three very, three buildings that were in very bad shape. And that is part and parcel of what we offer today. Board, we're recommending that we combine Alsey, Magnolia, and Chargin. We're also recommending that we combine Knight Road and Goodlett. All of these facilities are in bad shape and have high deferred maintenance. We're also recommending that we reassign the kids from Karnes, and I guess from Karnes, they would go to Bruce and the Downtown Elementary School, and then Dunbar would go to Cherokee. Now, just for point of reference, what happens with those two school reassignments would be, we still have to have community meetings. We anticipate bringing back a final recommendation in January with regard to the new bills. We're essentially asking the board for permission to approach the county commission and ask for capital funding so we can get these schools started. Had some really good discussion about this at the facilities committee, and Mr. Orgul and many board members actually pushed us to make sure that we were locating these schools in the right direction, in the right area. We're certain that the Goodlett and the Knight Roads proposal is in a great place. The team is still working now to kind of verify that Alsey is the right place, but in any respect, we'll bring back the final site for board approval. But do want to move forward, just let the board know. We've spoken to several county commissioners, and we got a positive response. We've spoken to some of the Shelby County administration with a positive response. So very clear, and I'll run through these slides, we've already seen them. We're asking for permission to ask for funding for two schools this year and two school closures this year. And then also, you'll see on here, we talked about, we also want to explore a K-12 for Woodstock, but we would not ask for the funding for that until the previous year. So let me go through these slides. Again, the Dunbar, we consolidate Dunbar into Bethel Grove. You know, consolidation will bring Bethel Grove to 95%. Cherokee will be at 98%. If you see the FCI on Dunbar, it's up there, and these are the state rankings of the schools. You'll see that Bethel Grove and Cherokee are obviously much higher performing schools in Dunbar. And again, I think the impetus for this is that Dunbar has severe capital needs and is very underutilized. What we would propose to do with that space is to essentially just demolish Dunbar and use the green space as a mini Golden Wildcat lane because it abuts the Melrose High School football stadium. And we spoke with people in that community, and they were excited about that. We also propose to close Karnes and reassign those kids to Downtown Elementary School and to Bruce Elementary School. Again, Karnes has a very, very high FCI, almost $4 million in deferred maintenance. We propose demolishing that, using that as green space too. I think that there is a lot of excitement around the medical district, and that piece of property may have standalone value in different ways, but we think the right thing to do with that, given the high deferred maintenance, is just to demolish it and send those kids to Bruce and Downtown, which are two much newer facilities. Again, I did note down there at the end, when we talk about Woodstock, don't want to do that action right now. I know that Ms. Love has raised some good questions, and the community out there has raised some good questions, so that will give us an additional year to engage with that community to figure out if the K-12, which we believe would work out there, is the right fit. Goodlett, we would propose again to combine Goodlett and Knight Road. Goodlett, as you see, is one of the highest FCIs in the district at 44%. Knight Road is much right behind it, at 36%. And we would combine these and build these students state-of-the-art, new facility. It would also reduce crowding at Sheffield about because we could rezone some of those kids over to GetWell, which is almost, which is a fairly newer facility, which is severely underutilized. We'd also propose that all of these new bills, we put in the I-zone to make sure we're able to invest additional resources in these schools. We talked about the Alsey. Essentially, if you look at Alsey, Chargin, and Magnolia, Magnolia's already in the I-zone, so we would propose that this new school would be a part of I-zone and also receive additional support. Again, Woodstock, that's our thinking, but that would not be, next year would be the year after next where we would approach the county commission about capital dollars to build a new school. The next steps, we obviously would have a session, community meetings in December and January at Karnes and at Dunbar. I know that board members have asked specifically, particularly board members whose districts these are in, to make sure we work with them to schedule those meetings, and I think we're already, we're doing that. We anticipate bringing these closure votes back to the board for final approval in January. And speaking to the county commission, what some of the commissioners have said to me is that the sooner we can bring the request, the better, simply because they need to figure out their bar and structure and all that. Obviously, yeah, so we'll be asking for some, for the board direction on that. And we obviously will continue to engage the community around these and other issues. And I just want to say, board, that the board knows that we have really done a deep-dive analysis of all of our facilities and all of our enrollment trends and patterns and all that. There's this frenzy, I think sometime, that's created by some of our media partners, and they're waiting for this big list with all these school closures to come out so we can put it on the board and cause pandemonium. We're not going to do that. We have the data, and we're going to continue to bring these closures to you all in a responsible way because what we know is that if you say this school is slated to close four years from now, then you have tough time getting teachers, families leaving droves, and things can change. So I just want to be clear, I know the board has asked me, we're hearing about this report. The board really has all the data and the information that we're working from, and my commitment to the board is that we're going to continue to bring these in a responsible way. We probably, the data suggests that we have roughly 15, 18 schools that should be closed over the next five years, and we'll continue to make those recommendations in a responsible and data-driven way. We're entertaining any questions.
Have Board Member Bibbs.
I didn't think I would be the first person, as Board Member Woods is laughing. The first thing I think about, of course, since we've started talking about this, I've been inundated with questions, emails, phone calls, visits, and all of the above. But I think one of the things, targets that I think I need answers to, transportation costs. As you talk about consolidating schools, have we looked at what the transportation cost of what that looks like per each one?
Yes. And we provide it to you between now and Tuesday, absolutely.
The other thing that I think is just a clear explanation around why certain campuses were picked over the other when you talk about consolidating the schools. I think that has been the number-one question and concern I've had from parents and other community people around. Why was this campus picked over my campus? The other thing that I really think about, just let me say this, a point of clarification. So if you're going to the county commissioners within the next couple of months, you're hoping to get the dollars. Hoping to get the dollars. Siri's trying to help you out. You're hoping to get these dollars for the 18, 19 school year for open, to be open?
For the, it would take approximately 18 months to build out, so it would be for the 18, 19 school year.
Okay.
Yes.
When a building is being demolished, what happens to that land? That's another question. I have about 20 questions. I know I can't give you all of them right now, but I just think those are the things in which we need to have answered for community as we go through this process.
So we, to answer, we obviously maintain title to the land, and we, I guess we've demolished four or five schools over the past few years. I think Orleans comes to mind. I know we're demolishing fairly now, so it just, it just becomes green space, and we continue to own the land.
Okay. My last one, I'm trying to use my time wisely as my colleagues look at me. Have we thought about, when we do this, how are we handling staff and buildings? What's the HR support looking like as we handle, work with staff through this?
Well, I think what we would do, what we would propose to do is essentially the same way we did West Haven, is that we pick a school leader and they pick their teams. But I also think, Ms. Bibbs, that, you know, I do want to caution because people, I think, see, oh, my gosh, school may be closing. I think I ask the community to take a pause here. First of all, I don't want to let the opportunity to talk about equity get away.
Absolutely.
Because we essentially, in our inner city, is filled with old, sometimes severely not-maintained bad buildings. And there has never really been an effort by, well, let me say it like this, there hasn't been an effort by any public body in a long time to also invest in the infrastructure of the inner city. So I think that what we learned at West Haven is that if you can get a critical mass of kids with a dynamic... kids with a dynamic school leader and a dynamic bunch of teachers and additional support, then you begin to improve the education. So I think that that's, that was impetus. And I'll say that the reason, and we can share, I think we will have the data, we can give it to the board. We just really looked at kind of a matrix in terms of, you know, first of all, how bad is your building? You know, I mean, and as you look up there, you see Knight Road, Goodlett, these are some of the, ALC, these are some of the worst buildings we have. And then what is the relation to other schools as relates to that building? And is there, are there other schools that are rather, that are severely under-enrolled? And then as the performance of these schools collectively, does it warrant, you know, additional treatment? So that's really the framework for analysis that we have as we've made these selections. And again, I say, Ms. Bibbs, this is just really, you know, the first kind of, you know, step in a long journey. And again, I know that I want to signal to teachers and school leaders that it's not a, you know, this is just a process, it's going to take a couple of years. So if you continue to work hard and get gains for kids and results for kids, all the job stuff will take care of itself, it always has.
Thank you. I had a couple more, but I am going to now defer it to my colleagues.
Board Member Love?
Thank you Superintendent. I do have, I guess, a couple of questions and then a couple of concerns. One thing that I do hope is that we continue to keep the employees engaged and continue to keep them abreast of the process. I know a lot of times when we do the community involvement, we speak to the parents and the community, but let's just make sure we keep the teachers engaged. And if we have employees that are at the school now and the teacher feels that they're doing a good job, let's strongly consider, whatever choice we make, let's strongly consider having, having them at the new school. As it relates to the Woodstock K-12 model, I do want to say that I strongly support this model, but some of my concerns are, North Haven Elementary has 346 children, E.E. Jeter has 344, Woodstock has 287, Lucy has 380, including pre-K is 415. And then we have about, I believe about 300 students that go to Tresman and Bolton from that area. If we're not going to explore the option of sending the children from North Haven to E.E. Jeter, which is a K-8, and there is 300, to this date, there's 344 students at E.E. Jeter, there's 346 at North Haven. It's about maybe a little under two miles from North Haven to E.E. Jeter. From North Haven to Woodstock, it's 5.3 miles. I think if we're not going to explore the option of sending the children from North Haven to E.E. Jeter, we don't need to close North Haven down. There are no buses that go to North Haven except for the spare buses. So now we're possibly looking at maybe nine buses, eight or nine buses to transport children from North Haven to Woodstock, which is 5.3 miles versus transporting them from North Haven to E.E. Jeter. And I know E.E. Jeter is a fairly new school. You know, I've had conversations with people who are for it, and I've had conversations from people who don't want those children combined. But I think, you know, I was elected not to do what was politically correct, but to do what was right by all children. So thank you for exploring this option. And, you know, like I stated, if we're not going to explore the option of sending those North Haven babies to E.E. Jeter, we don't need to close North Haven down. Because I think we had, we would have between 1,000 to 1,200 children just from Woodstock, Lucy, and taking the children back from Tresman and Bolton.
So I, I think, you know, we realize, Ms. Love, that, you know, that area is complicated because it's such a large geographic area, you've got so many different communities. But I think that, and that's why we want to wait for another year and continue to study and get more community feedback. But I think that we've got to do something. I mean, North Haven is one of the lowest performing schools in the state. I mean, it's in the bottom, I think the last list, one point something. Woodstock is in the bottom 5 percent. And there's no treatment at all for these schools. So I think, so I think that we'll figure out together, you know, if the right model is to move kids to Jeter or to do the K-12 or whatever. But I, and I know you share my concern that just the status quo out there is not cutting.
And I, I fully understand that. And if we look at E.E. Jeter, I mean, it's a level five school, right? And it's closer, you know, so we just need to explore, explore all options. I know.
Board Member Avan?
Superintendent Hobson, it would be helpful for, I think, the public as well as, and I know we shared some of this in facilities, but to see the actual number of students that would be impacted by each of these school closures or rezoning so that they have some idea of the number of students that we're rezoning for any of that weren't able to make those facilities meetings or didn't see the write-up in the paper, that at this meeting, it's helpful for them to see the impact number-wise. The other question I had, for some of these schools, and I'm thinking about just in particular the new campus for ALC where you have Chargene and Magnolia, there are some, and I know that our facilities department does a really good job of doing a deep dive and analyzing all this information. But in some of these communities, there are actually redevelopments that are going back up. So when we're talking about rezoning and closing, I'm thinking about just in the area of Magnolia. There are, there's a 500-plus unit that's being redone, just in that community, that we have to always make sure that we're considering where we're going to be in three years versus where we are just today. So even though I know that these schools need treatments and I'm looking at, you know, our numbers, I'm looking at where they are percentage-wise, I just want to make sure that we are also thinking forward. Because for some of these neighborhoods, even though they may look disparate at this point, there is some revitalization going on in some of these communities. And I know in this particular community, just because my grandmother lives two miles from the, you know, and I see this, this happening, so I just want to make sure that we're thinking about where we're going to be three years for some of these apartment complexes that are now being rebuilt, that we're thinking about that. Because the kind of status, pull-it-out-of-the-box model that we created for West Haven, it was great at the time of where we thought we were going to be, but we're already out of room at West Haven. I mean, like, you know, we have, we have to think forward about this. So I just want us to make sure that we're doing all of those considerations, even when we're thinking about the treatments for these schools.
I think that's an excellent point, Ms. Avan, and I know that they took that into consideration. I think something to think about too, though, also, that you have to look at this, you know, not too far from where this new school would be is Hamilton Elementary, which is probably about a third full now because the Warren Apartments closed. And so now you've got Hamilton and Hamilton Middle School, which are both, you know, need some students.
So are, is Hamilton one of the schools that we would then consider rezoning some of these students, since Hamilton is already an I-zone school? Because it's not, it's not one of the things that's presented here. And I'm just thinking about that particular community where I know that there is actually new units going up as we speak.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. So I mean, I think that as, in thinking about what's there now and in thinking about what may come about, you know, we certainly have considered, because we have, in all transparency, we talked about, you know, the combining of the Hamilton Middle and Elementary now possibly close, but we know that that may be coming online and we may need some space. So we absolutely, we absolutely thought about that. Thank you.
Board Member Jones?
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, so we're trying to have all of these meetings and be ready for the second week, the third weekend, January, to have it on the work session, your recommendation?
For the final, I mean, I think the...
So that gives us about five weeks to have these and we've got all the holiday then. I just have one request. I don't want staggered meetings where they're having two meetings a night unless there's staggered the time because, because I want to, I want to attend all. And in the past, they've just had them on the same night and that means that board members have to make a choice. I don't want to have to make a choice. I want to hear each and every community. So I requested that they not be staggered unless they're the same nights but at different times so that we can make, make both.
Ms. Powers?
And then just a couple of other things. So your recommendation to move the children from Karnes to Downtown and Bruce? So are you, I don't know if you're ready to share this, but is that for effective 17, 18 school year?
The Dunbar and the Karnes for next year.
All right. So for that particular, those particular schools, and I want to know how many students, how many K-12, but also how many early childhood and head start children are in those schools that would also have to move to Downtown and Bruce?
So how many?
From Karnes.
Okay.
From Karnes. Because, and, and part of that also, looking at that, that recommendation would include, if we're going to use that for head start and early, then we need to look at the facilities there. Because we already know that a head start has a higher level of facilities in terms of the requirements of playgrounds and all of that. So if we're going to look at that for 17, 18, we need to start at the same time looking at what, what are the head start standards that we are going to have to address at Bruce and at the Downtown School and have that ready for 17, 18 also, in anticipation of that happening. And also look at that in, in conjunction with our compliance report because there are hundreds of things that we have, we're in the middle of complying with. And we don't want to have to start looking at Bruce and Downtown separately. We want to do that all at one time because we know now we have some idea of the early childhood and of the, of the head start requirements. And they are stringent and they are additional to what we normally do. So we should do all of that at once. If we're saying we're closing Karnes, we're going to put these children, the head start in, in Downtown and Bruce, then we need to start, when we make that recommendation, making sure we look at that, those requirements, those compliance issues that we've done at other schools and make sure that they are in place from day one.
Dr. McClenda?
I don't have to say anything.
I think I had something else to say, but I'm...
I'm going to give you a little extra time. Just another two minutes after, if you can think of it before...
It's just that I want to emphasize, because I want to make sure to Board Member Avan's point, that we don't anticipate building a school that's full once, when it opens. We do need to have some extra seats and we do need to make sure we account for not only K-12, but the head start and kindergarten children, two that will go in that building. And I don't know if we have the numbers, if the numbers that we're giving per school actually include those, but I want to see what those look like, from Karnes just right now.
About it.
Board Member Cornell?
When you said Dunbar would be closed and torn down, what did you say we would replace it?
Green space. Green space.
For what?
Just for...
Park space?
Yeah, you know how, the vision is, you know, like Tiger Lane for the Tigers. So we're thinking like a Golden Wildcat lane for the Merrills Football Team and the community to enjoy that area.
And so the, there's some, some of the people in the community like that? Do y'all, do y'all know who you talked to? Oh, Tailgate Space. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I'm sorry, I misheard that. Okay. Now, Dunbar is near Hanley. Hanley's an ASD school at .5, Dunbar is at 4.5. I worry that if we close Dunbar, the parents are not going to walk, I mean, the kids are not going to walk either 1.7 miles to Cherokee or cross Lamar. But we'd rather we go to Hanley, which is a worse school. An ASD school, that's something I want y'all to think about. The, let's see. When, if you, also if you close three schools and make one, I think elementary kids get bused a mile and a half. Outside a mile and a half?
Yes.
Well, a mile and a half is 1.5 times 1.5 times pi equals the square miles. So each radius, I think, is seven square miles. If you close school, two schools, I mean, if you close three schools, then you're taking what was 21 square miles where kids walked and moving that into just seven. So really, you add 14 square miles of bus pickup. If the schools aren't already close together and they're far apart, then you're going to add, I think you add 14 miles of, square miles of bus pickup. And I, I wish y'all would look at that. And then the, I'm trying to bring the timetable up of the calendar. You know, I can't see asking parents during Christmas to come out and comment on something and then, and then we were going to vote, but we're asking for their comments. So how are we going to get comments from parents when they're not going to be really notified until they get back to school in January?
We can prepare for vote in February. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Well, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, no. And I think that to your point, Mr. Cornell, so we've done analysis, assured next week just a number of additional buses that would be needed. I think to, I think it's Ms. Avan or Ms. Bibbs' point, want to see that information and just the number of kids, so we've got that information. I will say, though, that if the board is inclined, I think on the, the new bills, the sooner we can request the money from the county commission, because that's going to be a process within itself, the sooner we can start the architect fees and construction and all that. Because I know I heard last time that the board rightfully so said, hey, we keep building these schools that were on this 20-year ago, we need some new, and I agree. So I mean, I think we're going to have to have some new designs and some really state-of-the-art facilities in these communities.
Listen, I would love to build new schools and, but most people throughout my whole lifetime, including all the controversies with busing and everything else, have said, we want neighborhood schools. I'm just wondering, is the county commission really interested in taking three schools and making one huge school? I don't understand why they can't say, well, let's, let's build a couple of schools that are smaller, but they're more like neighborhood schools. Could you kind of approach them with that concept?
Yeah, I think that when you look at the neighborhoods, Mr. Cornell, the population trends and shifts have changed, have shifts have changed so much, which is why you have so many underutilized schools. So you take, for example, you know, I'm just thinking about a school that, you know, Karnes probably seven or eight years ago had 600 kids. And then Carl Rock Guthrie was around the corner, it was full. And Klondike was around the corner, it was full, and Valentine. But now, people just aren't living there the way they used to live there. So those populations are dwindling and as a result, you've got all of these huge desperate need to repair facilities and they're not being utilized. And put on top of that, you know, you have, you know, the burgeoning charter population that recruits kids as well. So, you know, it just, it just, in our judgment, you know, we just have too many buildings themselves. We need to get nicer facilities and get more kids in them, get a critical mass of kids so that they could get the academic support they need.
Oh, I understand. I'm, I'm just thinking with elementary schools, people love that the little kids are closer. Thank you.
Board Member Bibbs?
Thank you. Yes, it is my second time, I'm aware. I think to Ms. Avan and Ms. Jones's point, I think my concern would be when you're trying to merge three schools into one, what is the intended capacity of a new building to be able to accommodate all of that in kind of understanding what that looks like for us? The other thing that I think we mentioned, FCI numbers in the presentation, but quite honestly, for the listening public and for the community overall, just telling us what the high, the FCI number was comprised. Where did it come from? What makes that number so high? What type of, you know, repairs are needed in order for it to be that high? My other question would be, in both cases of school consolidations, there is a high population of ESL communities. And I think how are we addressing that community and helping them to understand what's happening? I think this goes back to community engagement around just such a short time period to say, hey, we're meeting now and we're going to meet the first week of December and then maybe have some meetings between now and then and then vote in January. I'm just concerned about community engagement overall to have a vote in January on this issue.
Well, I think at the end of the day, the FCI, you know, the board, actually the county commission commissioned a study and they looked at every facility that we own. commission commissioned a study and they looked at every facility that we own. And based on the number of repairs needed, the higher the FCI number, the more dollars are needed to repair. And so that information, I think we can even put it online. It's just, it's just available. We've had it for, is it online now? We've had it for four years. So I think I'd encourage the community to look at that. And it breaks down. Need a new roof, need a new boiler, need some new this, needs new that. You know, I, with regard to the new bills, like, I don't know what a community member can say about saying, you know, my building is ragged and I like it. Like, I don't, like, I don't know. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, these facilities are just in very, very, very bad shape. I mean, like, you know, they're not unsafe. I don't want that to be a headline, but just, I'd encourage board members, because I've been to all these buildings.
Love ours.
And, you know, you don't have to have a new school to have a great learning environment. But some of these buildings have been neglected for so long that it just does not put you in the mindset for learning. We're pushing kids. We've got all these kids. We had 80-something schools in the bottom 10%. We're trying to come up with all these strategies. And it just seems to me that if you have a very, very bad building and you're going to be able to be in a new building with more support, like, I don't know what pushback, I'm sure there'll be some, but I'm not sure exactly what the pushback on there would be. And then in terms of the model, you know, we look at Bell Forest, two things. Bell Forest is, I think, has about 1,100 kids.
Okay.
And it's a community school. It's probably one of the best schools we have here at optimal capacity. You know, I think our vision around, particularly around Knight Road and Goodlett, because there's such a high ESL population, what I've challenged the team to do is, I mean, it should be, you know, state-of-the-art specifically with supports for our Latino students. I mean, because you do have, I think Knight Road is, you know, over 50%, Goodlett's probably pushing 50%. But Knight Road does great work. I mean, because those communities are very, very involved. So, you know, we can engage, but I mean, unlike people said, hey, I don't want my school closing for this or that. I mean, if the facilities are in bad shape, I like, I don't know what the pushback would be.
Right. I guess my concern about community engagement is more so like to Ms. Jones's point around, we can't just say, oh, we did it. We held a meeting there all on the same day and that's engagement. I think we have to be very authentic around what this looks like so that we are able to do a, if you're saying January is a board vote date, let's make sure it's authentic.
So two things are like, you know, I, you know, I think last year, we talked about school closures and the push on me was, hey, bring them earlier because you brought them too late. So that's why I want to bring in January. I can, we could push it back to February, March, or whatever, whatever the board wants to do. But I do think the the request for the county commission, you know, the sooner we can do that, the better.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, I guess one thing that I would like to see, going back to what board member Jones stated, I would like to see the number of students that attend that school and the number of students who are zoned to that school.
Absolutely.
As we begin to talk about, you know, building new buildings, because they, you know, the new building, they may come back. And also, just making sure that when we do have these community meetings, that whatever district staff that you have, make sure that, you know, they have the information to explain why we're choosing to build a new school on this property versus this property. Because there is some questions, you know, that I've received, especially dealing with the Knight Road parents. And, you know, just, well, I know they're gone, but just, you know, acknowledging that they did come out and hopefully they'll come back next week to express their questions and concerns. And also making sure that they attend those meetings, community meetings, so they can express their questions and concerns.
Board Member Avan.
My question was just around the, I know we pushed you to bring school closures to us sooner. And I think this starts the process for us. I don't think that we would be opposed to having a vote in February if, and understanding that timing around our budget is always going to be, and when we need to make a presentation to the county commission, that that should always be considered. But I think making sure that we do have, as Ms. Bibbs stated, an authentic process, especially since we have so many English as second language learners who will be impacted by the decisions that we are making, that we have ample time to have great community engagement. And if the holidays is just, I think, a bad time to try to get all of that done. But if we are able to start at the beginning of the year, I think it still gives us an opportunity to have a vote in February. But we've started the conversation so that people know where we are and that you have, this is something you're presenting to the board and that we need some time, you know, ample time to have the community engagement piece.
Absolutely. And I just ask the board too, I think that, because we've been through what the process is in terms of what the community engagement is now for four or five years. So if the board, if we want to do it a different way, I mean, we're open to however, whatever.
I don't think it's a different way. I just think because of the timing of the holidays, we're just saying that we want to make sure that we would be able to get a critical mass out to those meetings. So if, you know, after the beginning of the school year, I don't think the process is different. I think it really is just timing.
Bring it February. February. Bring it February.
And I'd echo the sentiments of board members Avan and Bibbs that, you know, I think that we do want to have more time to discuss it and to make decisions, but that doesn't mean we want to abbreviate or combine all these meetings because it's really, you know, I think we owe it to the communities to let them, you know, have their two cents and express their concerns. Because after all, we are going to be educating their children and they are having more and more choices to go to where the children are treated the best. So I would encourage you to figure out a way to spread these out so that everybody that wants to attend can. Y'all didn't know I could throw my voice like that, did you? I just wish I had known that when you were chair. Go ahead. Mr. Cornell, did you want to talk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we're going to be looking at the schools to see the point that they do need lots of repair and whatnot, can we get the detailed repair list of the schools? Not just the total, but exactly what's needed.
Sure.
Now, was that, was that done from the county commission sponsored?
Yeah, I think about a year ago, we selected a team to do it. Commission funded it, but it's every school, what the needs are.
I think I remember something with checks, but I didn't, I don't think I remember just a list.
We'll make sure we get it to you.
We're at 7.3 West End.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. I know the board is familiar with APTT. It's a training academy basically for parents to help support the community engagement process. We actually briefed the board on this seven or eight months ago, and they've been doing some work. But the contract, the full contract amount is going to go over our authorized amount. So we'll bring it to the board.
Board Member Cornell, is your light on this, on this one? So is that, okay. All right. With that one, we'll move to the next. 7.5 Curriculum Associates.
7.4 is the contract for Dunbar. Just for some context, board members, I think we pick up around $21 million a year in cash. We did an RFP. Dunbar was a successful armed carrier.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Board Chair. Superintendent, these pickups, you know, the fact that we've moved to a cashless society, I recall a comment that stuck with me when we first got on the board, that there's this perception that, you know, we don't take checks because parents write bad checks. But, you know, with today's technology, you can take a check and with the Check 21 law, it's out of your account before you get back to the car. So I do think that we shouldn't be painting that narrative of our parents. And if there's an opportunity to reduce costs by using technology, these pickups, although, again, I understand RFP went out, but it's still a substantial amount of funding if we can use technology to process payments. I know you got a fine CFO, so I put this out there, it's not to change this directive here, but that we look into using technology, that our schools can do transaction faster and move us closer to a cashless society. I understand that, that food services recently went to that, where we can load, is that the case? We can now load, you did that, then we can now get free lunch. But before that, we were loading our, our funding on, online and able to make those payments. So just, just using technology so we don't have to have this expense every year.
Board Member Avan.
I would appreciate if I could use my debit card at the school for as many t-shirts, tickets, all the stuff we have to pay. I'm, you know, I would be a proponent of that. Be personally.
Board Member Jones, I apologize. I forgot you.
I agree with board member Woods and board member Avan. I do think we do need to start moving toward using technology. I think part of the problem was not so much the check was bad. A lot of parents didn't, don't have checking accounts. But there are multiple other ways to make payments now that exist because of technology. And so I do think that going forward, we need to start, maybe take this year to do a survey to see where we are and what, what we, what our really needs and what, and what the parents really could manage in terms of something other than cash.
And then I know.
Board Member Woods.
And to board member McCormick's point, there's going to be a fee regardless. Somebody's going, if we're, if we move to technology, then I'm sure there's going to be a banking fee. But I think, don't, every year, the trustee come in here with some rebate check for those fees, we get, we can get some money back on that, right? All right, cool.
Seeing no more lights, let's move to 7.5 Curriculum Associates.
Thank you, board members. This is really just some PD. The board knows we've been using a program called iReady and iStation as our interventions for a number of years. And teachers, while they're using them, are consistently asking for more PD around it. So the, we actually have a contract that's already been approved. This is just actually to add the $41,000 for the PD so we can get the full bang for our buck for the iReady.
Seeing no lights.
Board Member Avan.
Superintendent, is this for new teachers or this would be for, the $41,000 for PD is for teachers that are already using iReady or these are new teachers?
For all teachers.
Okay. So those that are already using iReady, they just haven't had the PD?
Yes, we've been, we've been using it for about three years and teachers are consistent, I think, see, Ms. White, are consistently saying that while they know how the basics, it could do so much more and they just want more training on how to use the program.
Okay. And they haven't previously had any PD on the iStation?
They've had some training, but it's just more in-depth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seeing no more lights, we'll move to 7.6 Margarita Calderon and Associates Professionals.
Thank you. This is funded through our No Cost Extension with the Gates Foundation and is essentially PD to help support our ELL students with their literacy growth.
Seeing no lights, 7.7 New Leaders Incorporated Contract for Leadership Capacity Building.
Yes, this is essentially, as the board probably knows, we have a PLC coach in every building. It's professional learning coach. And they essentially work with teachers and help them develop their pedagogy and their practice through weekly meetings. This would be support through new leaders, actually to train or assist our PLC coaches. And I think that what's important here, board, is that you've heard for a while that the Tennessee standards have changed. And you're going to get the data from the state, I think, in the next couple of days, and you're going to see a significant drop in just the high school data because 338 didn't test last year. And then we'll get our data after that and we're going to have a significant drop. And what we've learned is that teachers are still struggling with trying to master the new standards. So we're trying to build capacity in buildings. We want to make sure our PLC coaches are really well versed in the standards so that they, along with the principals and the instructional leadership teams, can begin the process of helping teachers understand the standards and then be able to teach the material in a way where students can grasp it. That's what this is for.
Board Member Avan.
We weren't able to utilize the Gates No Cost Extension dollars instead of general fund for this because it's PD as well?
No, I mean, that, you know, we submitted a litany of things that we wanted to use the funding for, and this wasn't one that they approved.
So was the list that we submitted to Gates prior to where we now are, and could there be a revision so that maybe this could be added to that No Cost Extension?
They, I mean, I think that part of it was, you know, they already support us in the No Cost Extension with our other work with New Leaders Round, principals. And I don't think that, you know, after a lot of discussion all summer long, there didn't seem to be a lot of appetite to continue even a different variation of that work.
Seeing no lights, 7.8 Gartner Consultant Access Membership for IT.
Yes, this is the district's membership with a company called Gartner. I asked Mr. Williams to speak more to this one.
Good evening. Gartner is a worldwide organization. I'm sure some of you have heard of it. Shelby County has used it since I've been here for various reasons. But they provide three things to the district: research, consulting, and professional development for our IT team. Technology being a fast-changing industry, the only way we can even hope to keep up is rely on other people to gather information and keep us informed. And Gartner is recognized as a worldwide leader in being able to do that.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to 7.9 Maintenance Renewal for Microsoft.
Yeah, this is for the renewal for all of our Microsoft licenses throughout the district.
Seeing no, we'll move to 7.11, USDA, 7.10, I'm sorry, miscellaneous commercial food items for the 2016, '17 year.
That's exactly right, Mr. Chair. Miscellaneous commercial food bid comprising foods such as corn, hummus, veggie burgers, ranch dressing, cheese, sauce, gravy mix. It's purchased to replenish stock and it's $1.8 million.
Seeing no lights, 7.11 now USDA commodity processed items for the 2016, '17 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similar item for commodity processed items, $1.8 million. Yeah.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, is this, these are just processed, like, processed food or?
It's probably, yeah.
Okay. And I do have a question, not necessarily to this, but about the food. I know that some schools, they have snacks. Is that based on the principal's request?
Are they snacks provided by the, can you say more about that? Like, the district provides snacks?
I will allow Mr. Cook to answer that question. But board member Love, the bid, this commodity process bid is to process commodity food items donated by the USDA.
Yeah, that's, this doesn't necessarily relate to 7.11. But since we're talking about food. And I only ask that because my daughter, she attends an 8:00 a.m. through 4:00 p.m. school and she eats lunch about 10:30. So she eats breakfast about 7:45. So from 10:30 to 4 o'clock, that's a long stretch. So can we at least explore the option of maybe those schools where they have a smaller cafeteria, but a lot of children incorporating a snack in there?
Can you speak to that against what the practice is? I mean, obviously, we don't want kids.
Yeah, we can speak offline, but she's in the audience and she told me.
Okay. Okay.
Say something.
Okay.
Seven point twelve, playground canopy installation in fourteen sites for the, uh, from Fund twelve, twelve for the Head Start program.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I think, obvi- that item is going through, I guess, the policy council and it's for playgrounds, uh, at, um, Lawrence, Willow Oaks, Sharp, Robert R. Church, Whitehaven, Alton, Keystone, Egypt, Crump, Garden View, Germanshire, Seattle, Sherwood and Doubletree.
Board Member Jones.
I wanted my light on for seven point one three, so I'll wait.
Item seven point one three, playground installations.
Yeah, this item is for, uh, two hundred sixteen thousand dollars playground installations in four elementary schools. I think this is, um, voted on by the policy council and there's a compliance issue. Uh, the schools are Carnes, Hawkins Mill, Kingsbury and Treadmill Elementary School.
Board Member Jones.
Thank you. Uh, I, I attended the policy council meeting where this, uh, was discussed and it was my impression under that time and I, and I think I let the members to believe that I thought that Carnes would not be, um, closed until the eighteen, nineteen year. So I'm hearing tonight and I recently learned that we're talking about a matter of months. Um, and so that's really not the information that was discussed at the meeting. But, so in light of that and the fact that Carnes is on this list, I do think that we need to contact the appropriate, um, grant, uh, compliance authorities in light of that agreement that we have to see how this, uh, changing circumstances with Carnes would affect our compliance agreement and what we could work out, uh, in terms of what would be satisfactory for all parties and in terms of that. So, and then have that information brought back to the policy council, whether it has to be at emergency meeting or one of the regular meetings, I don't know. I guess it depends on when we are able to get some type of answer. But I do see the wisdom in looking at Carnes in a different light. Um, but I do think that because we have an agreement, we need to consult all parties and be on the same page of what this means in terms of our compliance.
So, so I guess a couple of things, Mr. Jones. I, I would recommend we leave it on, I'm gonna have Dr. McClendon. I guess we need to reach out to, um, the Head Start folks and make them aware of, of the proposal around Carnes and then the policy council. But I also want the Board to know, uh, I think the, the policy council's consideration was, I think that even if you put the playground down, you can move it. Uh, there's a cost associated with that, which I wanted to flag, but that just wanted to raise that. So we will definitely make sure that we get some clarity, uh, because I don't wanna be out of compliance at the end of the day.
Right, right. And I, and I think specifically, we need to look at when their next visit is to do, uh, a site visit and how we, I think it can be worked out, we just need to have more communication around this area.
Board Member Love.
So that was my concern as well, the Carnes Elementary. And I know that, um, the playground wasn't in compliance, but, um, from what, why, from what I think I know, we would just have to send in a request to, I guess, the regional office, letting them know why we wanna do this. Um, and I guess Dr. McClendon, she can speak more on it. And then I guess requesting to ask to remove it, uh, you know, whenever the new school is built. But just, I guess, just letting them, making them aware of what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it.
So, um, do we anticipate that we'll have an answer before the, before the business meeting?
The process will work is we'll go back to policy council. We can call a special call policy council meeting for the end of the week. Um, we can advise them of the impending school closure there at Carnes. And then we can, from their recommendation, call the regional office and ask the regional office, could we do a deletion or substitution? Because these are carryover funds and they've been approved specifically for the way the application is written. So we would need permission from the policy council and then the regional office. And we could hopefully bring that back, um, next week, um, to the board meeting on Tuesday.
So I, I think it's important we stay in compliance and I think, um, while every dollar's significant, I think we're talking about an amount of money that I would not wanna be out of compliance for the grant. Um, so if that, if we don't get an answer definitively, my suggestion would be go on and, and do this at work at, at Carnes Elementary.
I agree.
Seven fourteen, playground installations, mat installations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, hundred fourteen thou- hundred eleven thousand dollars for playground installations, uh, the mat installations. This is also funded through Head Start, uh, schools would be, um, Levi Elementary School, Ford Road Elementary School, Bethel Grove Elementary School, LaRose Elementary School and West Side Elementary School.
Seeing no questions, seven point one five, Architects for Cordova Elementary, ten classroom additions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think seven point fifteen, sixteen and seventeen are all, uh, additional fees that, um, uh, were related to some construction. And the way the contract read, it said that we could reimburse them up to a certain amount. So any fees over that, we need to bring back to the Board. Uh, there's a fifteen thousand dollar fee for Cordova, uh, a twenty thousand dollar fee for the West Haven, uh, and, uh, sixteen thousand, two hundred dollar fee, uh, additional fees, recoverable fees for the, uh, Berclaire Classroom Edition.
Chief Board Member Oracle has a question.
Yeah, my question was, uh, and I understand that if we, did we miss this? Is what happened when we approved these?
No, we.
Yes, brother.
Board Member Oracle, when the recommendations were brought back in two thousand fourteen, they did not include the reimbursables, the up to amount for reimbursable expenses.
So did we just miss it? Is that why we didn't put it on there?
Not sure why they didn't include it at that time.
It wasn't you, I know, it was somebody else that was in that position, but, um.
But it is in the contract.
I don't have a problem with it, but I would just say, so it's up to a certain amount? So they all came out at exactly five percent. Would it not come out to eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars? Cause I made copies on this. So is this an up to amount we're approving or is it just a flat amount?
These are exact amounts. Uh, one includes a change order.
No, no, so Superintendent, if you're making copies and getting MyLars done or whatever they had done, FedEx fees, all kinds of stuff, um, but whatever the miscellaneous, I have no problem with it, cause that happens and that's very standard. I know we always vote on it. But it doesn't come out to an exact dollar amount.
Fifteen thousand dollars.
Right, postage, you know, is forty-nine cents, that never gets a zero on it. Oh, I think that's what it is. The, but, so what I'm saying is, do we not, do we just give the exact reimbursable? Or do we say, hey, do you have, can you provide us? Cause that, when I get my, I just paid a legal bill today at my office and it had reimbursables on it, you know, it came out to some odd figure. So it, these were all exactly five percent.
Yes, they were. And we do have the itemized, uh, billing from each of these. And we did calculate and it is five percent. So that's something that we'll be monitoring going forward. But we do have the itemized billing for the reimbursables.
Superintendent, there's no way, just, I know those twenty people won the lottery in Nashville and that was cool, but there's no way that we picked the lottery and three people got them to come up to exactly five percent of their bill. So, anyway, I'm just saying to you, but it, it's up to ninety-seven, that's fine. And it, it, I have no problem with it, whatever the amount is.
It's just that it, the expectation would be, you know, some thousand, some hundred dollars and some change, not just.
Right, there's no way it came out to exactly five percent three times. So all I'm asking is that we, if we're approving it, even though it's not a huge amount, we should be prudent and we should look at it and say, oh, well, you had eight thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars with the reimbursables, up to ninety-seven fifty, it's fine. Or you had it up to sixteen thousand, it's fine, just.
With the number.
You can't just pay ninety-seven fifty or fifteen thousand or, or twenty thousand. It's never gonna come out that way. I just noticed it and I.
So, so I have a question. If, if they have receipts for more than the reimbursable five percent, wouldn't we just ask for the five percent?
The amount that we would approve would be the up to amount.
Right, so, so in some instances, there may be invoices for more than these amounts that.
Could have been.
I, I'd like to, to know.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Second time.
And if it went over, then we should, uh, if, if they had reimbursables or more, then we should get paid for it. I'm just saying, it, it's just not gonna come out exact.
So we, we, we'll spend some more time looking over the, I mean, yeah, and I, I think that's a good point. And I know I have seen the reimbursements and I, I, it, it, it does seem odd they would come out to exactly fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. I guess the other one was sixteen thousand, two hundred and nine thirty-eight, but those other two.
But that was, that was a change order for, that was two things.
We'll spend some more time before next Tuesday.
Seven point eighteen, Bay Area lease extension.
Yeah, this is one that went, um, before the Facilities Committee. Uh, they want to extend their lease, uh, until December thirty-one, two thousand seventeen, thirty thousand dollars per, per month.
Seeing no lights, we'll move to seven nineteen, security guards for various locations in the SES School District.
Thank you, this is exactly what this is for, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, we, in addition to R F's and to the sheriffs, uh, we also, uh, hire armed security guards through, uh, company and through an RFP. Uh, and it's for seven hundred, up to seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
This is a popular one, all right. Board Member Cornell.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there's not much I can say about this, it just worries me a little bit. It, the amount of money is pretty high. Do, do we not have people on our payroll that are actually loyal, dedicated? That can fill some of this, this, these positions or some, or do some of that work? This is seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and is this creeping privatization? I just, people with guns and badges that aren't really true police officers and do a great job. But around kids, they need, they may need some extra training. So it kinda worries me. Why do we, why do we need seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars with a security guard?
So, I think it's kinda, they just really supplement the security that the, we have our in-house and with the sheriffs. And it's actually less expensive to do it this way than have people getting more and more overtime. But I'm gonna ask, uh, Chief Darrell and Director Jackson if they can maybe give you a better explanation of the kinds of services that the, uh, company provides.
Through the Chair, this is, uh, a contract that comes every year. We utilize armed and unarmed guards for our facilities, uh, parking lots and some of our auxiliary buildings to assist, uh, with the, uh, front of the building and to make sure that our officers are inside the schools. These officers are not in schools with guns. And if you look at the, the explanation, we also have an hourly billing rate of, uh, thirteen fifty for unarmed guards for guarding our facilities. This really saves us a lot of money. Also, when we close a building and that building is slated for demolition, we provide armed and unarmed guards at those facilities to keep it from being vandalized and the carver taken, uh, from those, those buildings. So this is a contract that we've been, uh, bringing before the Board for the last, uh, since I, I, I can remember.
So these are not interacting constantly with children?
No, not at all.
I think example, Mr. Colonel, you know, when you come to, you got those armed guys out there and if you go out to some of the different sites, um, you know, particularly boarded up sites or sites that are about to be demolished, they usually use them for that. I think they do help with some of the extracurricular activities, some of the football games and things of that nature, I think they do help with that too.
Correct.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, what percentage, um, of our armed and unarmed staff, um, are actually employed by Shelby County Schools? Or is this all just a contract?
These are, are strictly contract guards, contract. If, uh, if the bomb building calls and they've had a series of incidents at that building and state that, uh, they need assistance, uh, around the holidays, we can provide them an unarmed guard or guard for that area to make sure that our, our staff that work in that building are safe. So this is strictly a contract to be utilized as needed for the district and the protection of the assets and the, the people who work for the district.
Okay, so what's the timeframe from, cause he said as needed, um, so I mean, are they just on standby or?
Yeah, I think they're, Ms. Love, there's some of them.
That work somewhere else?
Some of them are regular, like I just use, the people who come here every day. Uh, and then I think that, you know, just depends on what's happening. I know sometimes you have a really, really big game somewhere where you need, you know, you need some more support, they'll come out then. And then really, I think as, uh, as Chief said, on as needed basis, like sometimes we get calls in the middle of the night, you know, and they'll go out and see what's going on with a particular, a possible vandalism. So they truly are just, you know, as needed and they just supplement, um, you know, the guard. How, how many guards, how many school security officers actually work for us? Not the contract, but the, our actual in-school?
Ninety-eight.
Okay, so ninety-eight and, and those are officers that are employed by us? And they're armed, are they armed?
Yes, they're armed and, and trained, uh, uh, police academy trained.
Yeah, and then we have, and of course, we have the, um, schools, I guess, the fourteen schools that the Shelby County Sheriff's Department is in.
Okay. Well, let me, um, they do a really good job, cause I didn't know that that was half SES and half temp. You can't tell them apart. So they're doing a really good job.
It's probably not half, I mean.
But still, I can't tell them apart.
They, they.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a good job.
One other, uh, thing that I wanted to, to make sure we're aware of, because of the situation that's happened with the CNC, we're having to staff those locations also. So that's a, a reason for the, the increase. Those are twenty-four hour staffed locations by, by our contracted guards.
Board Member Jones.
Um, I was just wondering, is there a reason why we wouldn't wanna include in these six companies? Who the owners, the names of the owners and maybe their address and, um, how long they've been in business? Some little data on each one just for informational and for transparency. Um, I don't know if I know any of these individuals or not, I'm kinda voting blind. Is that the way it's intended? Or is there a reason why you wouldn't wanna con- include that information?
We, we can include that for Tuesday, I don't. Yeah, there's no.
That information is available, but we, they go through the procurement process and are recommended, uh, if they pass a process through procurement to be on this, this contract.
So, so we'll get you that information, Ms. Jones. We'll get, we'll get it soon.
Board Member Oracle.
Uh, I understood her question too, cause actually, my business partner owns a security company. He's not listed on there. And, uh, and I, I asked him about the rates. So the rates are good, you did a good job and you bid it out. And also, we use five M W Bs, I believe, that were on there, which is, which is great. The, what I wanna make sure of, and I'm gonna harp on this, and I, I asked when the facilities, and I said in the facilities meeting, when the cleaning contract's coming up? Because if somebody is paying people seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour and charging us seventeen dollars an hour, it's not acceptable to me. And so, and, and I think no one can work for that amount of money and get by. So in this case, I believe, and maybe we can settle between this week and next week, that, uh, we need to set a floor, if we're able to do it. You have to tell me, we have to do this now and litigate this now. But that, they have to pay them a minimum amount. And we, or we wanna know what their wage scale is, because, uh, that, that's not right. We can't, we can't, in some cases, under educate people, as I said. We can't, we can't, in some cases, under educate people, as I said, and then underpay them, too. So we're part of the problem and part of the solution, or we're not even part of the solution if we do that. So we need to watch that, and they have to, I think, for me to vote on it next week, they need to tell us what they're going to pay, the minimum that they're going to pay their employees. And there's a spread, they're an employment agency, is all they are, and if you went to manpower, it's the same thing. So they're an employment agency, and I just want to make sure that they're paid a decent wage.
Board Member Cornell, second time.
I think Chairman Orgul's, Orgul's point is really good. It kind of gets back to my feelings that I may not have expressed as well, but that if someone's being paid minimum wage, no insurance, no retirement, no commitment really to us, and they're going to have guns around our children, it worries me. But we've been told that it's mainly for buildings and whatnot. I would like to know, to make sure we haven't, or aren't laying off people to replace them with this, so I would like to know if our security guards or numbers are the same.
Absolutely not, no.
Board Member Bibs.
Just one quick question, if between now and next meeting, we can get just a list of how we've used them in the past, I know we've said it, but I think if you go back and look in your records and figure out how we've officially used them, that probably will help us understand better how the money is being spent.
Do it. So just make sure, so the, kind of a written list of how we use them, some understanding of what their pay rate is versus what we pay, and then the names of the owners of the company, got it?
And next is seven point two oh, which is the November budget amendment.
Mr. Johnson.
Absolutely, this is the November budget amendment. What you'll see here is a number of realignments within our budget. There was a, a new grant that we received in terms of federal grant reward, the comprehensive school safety initiative as well, and that. But let me just walk you through very briefly through the, the realignments. For our general fund, there's no increase in the budget, but there are realignments related to exceptional children due to just greater guidance from the state, so that's reflected. In terms of our special revenue, there's an amendment in terms related to special education Medicaid reimbursement that we are increasing that budget by two hundred thousand. We're essentially moving fund balance funds within special revenue funds, caring, and caring for it that, to this year. I would say that this is the area where the district has been really aggressive. Last year, the amount was four hundred and seventeen that was collected in Medicaid reimbursement. Currently, we're about a hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty thousand. So this is often an area where we can generate funds through Medicaid reimbursement and continue to serve our kids with disabilities more. And the last is related to our federal program fund. There's a realignment with the Carol Perkins Grant, and there's also an increase of a new award for the comprehensive school initiative of four hundred and fifty-four thousand. And along with that, there's a realignment in terms of our I D A supplemento, which is fairly small, of about forty-seven thousand dollars.
Seeing no lights, seven twenty-one Verizon Foundation Grants, Project Lead the Way Gateway, introduction to computer sciences.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes, it's a donation from Verizon for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The grants will go to Chickasaw Middle, Douglas Cade, Havenview Middle, Cape Bond, Ridgeway Middle, and Treadwell, Treadwell Middle Schools.
Next is a Shrine School donation.
Thank you, we add that one, it's a shrine, I think we are, Dr. T, could you speak to the Shrine School donation?
This is funding that the Shriners are providing for Shrine School. They support the school. Each and every year, they do a lot, both financially and, and in people helping support students in the school. But this funding will provide communication boards and communication software for our students in Shrine School, many of whom are unable to, to speak, but they, they can communicate. They have the cognitive ability to communicate, but the inability to speak. So this provides communication devices and software for them.
Seeing no more lights, we'll move on to seven point two three, the two thousand sixteen L E A compliance report.
Thank you, board members, as the board knows, every year, we have to submit a, or we're asked to submit a compliance report to the state that deals with a number of issues, and we are happy to say that there are no non-compliance issues that we're aware of within the district-run schools. I think there were some, a few charter schools that had some licensure issues with some teachers, and we're working with them to correct those.
Okay, so it looks like we have, do we have two Shrine School?
Yes, we got a light.
Okay, oh, excuse me, all right, Board Member Avant.
Superintendent, how are we working with the charter schools for those teachers that are currently out of certification?
Can you speak to that, Ms. Small, especially reaching out to them and flagging it for them, and, you know, I mean, we have, you know, limited ability to enforce, but certainly calling it out and, and trying to counsel them around what their obligations are. That's really the extent of what we do.
So we just strongly encourage them to get that taken care of? That's the extent of our authority?
Could you add some, add to that, Ms. Leon?
So in addition to the work that Ms. Small's team does, it's an item on the operational scorecard, which is active and live, and so schools that aren't compliant on that will receive a poor score on that component of the operational scorecard, which overall is a measure of their operational strength. So they have a large incentive to make sure that they're doing it well. So there is a little bit of accountability in the scorecard we put together.
And what percentage would we, what is the, I'd just like to see a little synopsis of how many of those teachers are out of compliance with?
You have that information, Ms. Small, Ms. Leon, I think that.
We can get the exact numbers for you, there were not very many. I think we were looking at three schools, and let me ask Lindsay, Ms. Osborne, do you have the exact number of teachers? Fourteen out of the three charters? The four charters, so a total of fourteen teachers in the, within the four charter schools that we're working with. And in addition to it, being an indicator on a performance scorecard, we do, Ms. Osborne's team, the talent acquisition team, they do provide training to the charter schools at the onset of school and try to really help them to work through and resolve those issues as updates are provided to us by the state. Ms. Osborne's team also works with the charter schools to make sure that they have the required training. So most of the time, they do try to really work with us to get those issues resolved.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we have seven, wait, Board Member Cornell.
Let's see, when it says eight, whatever, it says, it says one class with no licensed teachers. Does that mean that the teacher, there's a teacher they're teaching that's not licensed? Or does that mean that they're using only subs? Or not, or there's nobody there? What does that mean? Does that mean there's a teacher that's not licensed, teaching something, or substitute teachers, or?
That means that there's not currently a teacher of record in that classroom, so they must be utilizing subs. And the reason it's flagged specifically with those areas like algebra or English for the secondary endorsements is because unfortunately, those students could run the risk of not graduating if they have, if they're without a licensed teacher for over twenty days.
I know Wooddale Middle didn't have teachers. Oh, I know, I know, I mean, at one point in time, Wooddale Middle didn't have teachers, and so A S D grabbed them. So I'd like to ask our attorney something. These are areas of non-compliance, what authority do we have to put them in compliance? Which I think Avant touched on. Board Member Avant.
That's a question we've been debating, actually. So there's no clear answer, and I think that, for some reason, mine's showing a blank on here on the screen. Yours, yeah, but I, I know earlier, we had actually suggested some changes to the language that suggested that we would request or inform the charter school of their non-compliance. Because you're correct, when you look at the governance of charter schools and the ability the state gives us to regulate their activities, we're very limited if they choose to violate that particular statute. Although, I will say, though, the state can withhold funding, so maybe, you know, maybe that's the point.
Well, then, if they withhold funding, would it be from us or from them?
It would be from them, it would be from the, in other words, that charter, the funding allocated to charter school for a position could be withheld if it's not correctly filled.
Board Member Love.
Superintendent, when charters submit their charter application, we have, I guess, guidelines that we, that we want to see in a charter application, right?
That's correct.
So couldn't this be one of them, making sure that they have licensed teachers?
Yeah, I think that they, that's really a conditioned precedent. I mean, I think that that's, that's assumed, and we obviously, you know, the law requires that. So, yeah, I mean, so I think that, you know, but, but, I mean, to be fair, you know, we have instances, too, where you may have a teacher who are sub or something like that, and it may come up. So, I mean, I think that, you know, a hard line approach, obviously, is to say, all right, well, if you don't have teachers, this is the grounds to revoke your charter. But I think just the operation, the reality is, is that I think that they are working to get these things resolved. And I mean, they have, nobody said, you know, the only thing, the only response we've got is, okay, we're trying to work to get through it. So, but you're right, I mean, that's, that's certainly a requirement under the law and under our procedures.
So is there not anything in place now to where they would have to report that, I guess, to Chief Leon?
Yeah, that's how we.
The compliance report comes back to us, right?
That's how we find out. I mean, so what happens is, we get, you know, we run the data for all schools, including ours, to see who has, where the issues are, and they report, and then we can see their data. So, yeah, they, they essentially self-reported their concerns. But I think that as, as, as Ms. Osborne and Ms. Small said, I think most of these are just around subs and stuff like that, yeah.
So now I think we're at seven point two four, the Shrine donation that was added.
Yeah, this is, we're asking the board to accept a donation of about twenty-three thousand dollars' worth of chairs be used to help support our physically impaired students at the Shrine School.
Seeing no questions, we'll go to Board Items eight, point one.
How, we got, how does this differ from seven point two two, which is a Shrine School donation?
Let me see, I think that was.
Which was twenty-three thousand dollars.
You may be correct, Mr. McCollum, we may ask for two cents of chairs.
Would you call my wife and let her know?
Yeah, I guess this must have been the placeholder, yeah, you're correct, it's the same thing.
So we're on eight point one, proposed policies, new and revised, first reading.
Thank you, Chair. We have four policies that went through the I B O committee for review, discussion, and it was recommended to be placed on to the agenda with the provision that we make the recommended changes to policy twenty nineteen grants, gifts, donations, and sponsorships as requested by the committee, and those, the request was to ensure for, I believe it's unrestricted funds, that it requires the superintendent to provide notification of the use of the grants, gifts, donations, sponsorships approved by the board, and such notification, if feasible, shall be prior to expenditure of those funds. We also made one other revision to ensure that the policy directs the administration to develop processes and guidelines that ensure alignment with the policy. The other revisions were purchasing authorities, just briefly, that was to take out the, the language around the, adhering to the former regulations, federal regulations, and we will now adhere to the current federal regulations. Then we have the disposable surplus personnel property, which we're asking you to change the name of that to inventory management, and that will include disposable surplus plus personal property along with other items that deal with inventory management. And finally, forty, forty-nine legislative leave, that is where it provides two days, a month for any employee to, to attend official business if they are appointed or elected. I want to remind the board as well that during that committee meeting, you all are going to request suspension of the policies to adopt that particular policy on one reading. And one other thing, we're requesting, the administration is requesting that the grants, gifts, and donation sponsorship be effective as of July first to allow us to, to staff to adequately train for, to conduct with the policy, to implement the policy.
Board Member Jones.
I've wanted clarification on the top of page two, I may be reading it wrong, the three lines and read as to what that means, those two sentences.
Top of page two of which file?
Four oh four nine, legislative leave. I didn't remember that from before, but it may have been there, but.
Yes, that, that was there, and that's employees shall not take a half-day leave increments to avoid difficulty in obtaining classroom substitutes where applicable, is that the one?
Yeah, so if it's not applicable, a substitute's not applicable, then they could take half-days?
No, I think the where applicable is for teachers, because this is a policy that deals with both.
Right, so a non-teacher could take a half a day?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm not sure about the any day not used in a given month can be carried over, cannot, I'm explaining that. I'm not, the second sentence of that.
Any day not.
Not used in a given month cannot be carried over to the following month.
I think it's just that it's just two days, it's, you can't, you can't build up days by saying, I'm not going to go these two months, but I'm not going to go these two days, and I'm going to carry them over to the next month, so I have four days.
Oh, yeah, no, it's just two days.
Yes.
Right, for, for calendar year.
Yes.
Right, I mean, I'm sorry, per month, I see, oh, now I understand what you're saying. Why would we want to do that? Is that a request from, or is this, is someone request that?
This is the original language, and I think the, when we brought it originally to you all, I think that the idea is that you don't want someone to accumulate, because they could accumulate, we have nine months, so that's two days a month, and if you push it, you could have someone out for two weeks.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
Seeing no, seeing no other questions, eight point two, policy manual review resolution.
Board members, that simply just documents. Board members, that simply just documents that you all conducted the legally required biennial review of your policy manual?
Seeing no lights, we're about to the end, so, I guess 9.1, which is adjourn the meeting.
No.